Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our first draft of the 2022 budget. It is nine o'clock, so I will call the meeting to order, and Mallory, if you could do roll call for us, please.
Sure. Counselor Clark?
I'm present.
Counselor Donaldson?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Present.
Counselor McCackney?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
Counselor Wood Roberts?
Present.
And Mayor Roberts?
Present. Thank you. Next is, I need a mover in a second or two to adopt our agenda, please. Counselor Clark and Counselor Smith? Be resolved that the agenda for the special meeting of the Council of the Municipality of Dicard at All be held on December 10th, 2021 be approved as presented. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried, and I will look to see if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest.
Does the council remuneration count as a conflict of interest?
You can ask the clerk, and neither does taxation. No, so we're all in a conflict because we all pay taxes in Dicard, so therefore we aren't. But good question. Okay, so we'll move right along, and as per usual, what I have done and we've done in the past is basically turned it over to our treasurer Barbara. And I am still chairperson, but questions may be directed directly to her, and she can answer if there's any out-of-order type thing, I can still call that. I'll get my little gavel out, but I don't think so. This is our fourth budget. Barbara, first of all, I want to thank you for all your hard work and dedication to you, especially as treasurer, but to all the department heads who've been working since end of September, October, to get their draft budgets to you. I was able to participate in those detailed budget first early days with the department heads, and I really want to say how much, how dedicated our staff is here at Dicard. They understand that this is the taxpayers' money. The goal is always to keep it as reasonable or zero interest or increase as possible. That isn't always possible, as we'll see today. But that's the goal. There's not one line where there's a variance where it hasn't been questioned and asked. So anyway, thanks again to you and all the department heads for the work to bring this forward today on December 10th. It is the first draft, so I'll remind councillors that it is very high level today, and we do have two more scheduled meetings, one in January and, if needed, one in February. So with that, Barbara, I'm going to turn it over to you. I'm actually going to turn my microphone off and take it away.
Well, good morning, and thank you very much for those kind words, Mayor Roberts. I do echo the collaboration with staff. We have been working tirelessly at times to get the budget numbers together. There's been a lot of thought put into the budget process. Definitely, we've reviewed every line. There will be some large numbers presented today, but there's also some rationale behind those numbers. So first of all, welcome to the Budget 2022 presentation, and I'd just like to take a moment to present the layout of the meeting today. So each department manager will present their respective department details, and there will be an opportunity to ask questions at the end of each department presentation. So please hold on to those questions until we get to the Q and A slide. So without further ado, we'll get started. I'll share my screen. Okay, so you should see the the welcome page for the budget presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So first off, we'll just review a bit of where we're at for 2021. We still have some numbers to crunch through. At this point, we don't have a final number. However, there are some areas of concern. So just to back up a bit, despite managing through the COVID pandemic during 2021, the municipality was open for business. Staff found alternative methods for providing municipal services. The Emergency Control Operations Group met on a regular basis throughout the year. And just of notable interest, there were 4,131 staff hours allocated to COVID-related activities. That actually equates to two full-time equivalent positions. So here we have staff managing COVID along with their day-to-day responsibilities. The roads maintenance is an area of concern right now, and we're just kind of waiting to see how 2021 rolls out. Obviously, the key items there is snow plowing and sanding. Some big surpluses there right now, and we are watching those closely, and one of the recommendations staff would like to make based on the year-end results is any surplus for the equipment portion rental of those expenses be transferred to development reserves. The reason for that is that model there is a reserve for replacement of our municipal vehicles. And if they're not rolling, if the wheels on the vehicles are not rolling down the road, they're not generating that revenue, but we still need to allocate that money to the reserve for future replacement. So fortunately, in 2021, we were able to capitalize on some of the safe restart money that we received, notably to fill the gap on the arena revenue. Obviously, we weren't working at full capacity. The medical center parking revenue there is down considerably, again, due to COVID. And then just some miscellaneous items for emergency supplies and so forth. So there are a few carryover projects that are going to be presented today from 2021 into the 2022 budget, and that will come later in the presentation. So now we'll move on to municipal taxation. The 2022 budget will be presenting a 7.5% increase on the levy, and that's also complemented with a 1.46% of new growth. So here we're looking at, on a residential property, $100,000 assessment is looking at additional $22.48. For the commercial, it's $33.33. And for industrial, it's $38.62. So again, there hasn't been too much of a shift on our assessment here, and residential properties make up 95% of the municipal levy. 1% of the municipal levy equates to just over $101,000 in revenue. And here is the chart just to share with the history of the tax rates over the years. The green line is the municipal levy, and you can see the uptick here from 2021 to 2022. The same with the county. They haven't finalized their number yet, but they're looking at an increase of 3.53%, and we have yet to hear on what the education rate will be. So here we have the same trend for the municipal and the county. With the education portion, last year, there was an 11% decrease on the levy for commercial property tax. So this picture here indicates that, yes, property taxes have increased over the years. So our 2022 levy will amount to just over $11 million. One notable item here is, we did hear from the ministry, and the current value assessment of properties has been postponed due to COVID, similar to 2021. And what we've heard is the assessment will remain at the CVA, the 2016 CVA values for the years of 2022 and 2023. So basically, what happens here is we are just actually capitalizing on any growth throughout the year, and there is no growth or increase on the phase in value of property assessment at this time. So up at $11 million, 59.4% will be funding municipal expenditures. Again, this year, we've received the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund funding, and so relatively flat over 2021. We're going to be receiving $1,889,000, and that's roughly $7,000 more over 2021. That equates to $239 per household. So this slide here breaks our sources of funding into three categories. Notably, the first one is property taxes, and if you follow the lime green line, yes, that is increasing year over year. Federal and provincial grants have remained relatively flat. Basically, there, we've got our Canada Community Build Fund, our Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. Those are two notable grants that we receive for infrastructure. Under the other non-tax category, this here is a combination of user fees. It includes any debt. It includes any transfers from reserves. So our total grants are $2.9 million, and our other non-taxation revenue is just under $4.6 million. Now, just to highlight a couple of the grants here, obviously, the federal grants I mentioned was the community or the Canada Community Build Fund. That has formerly been known as the Federal Gas Tax Fund. And so the budget this year will be drawing $390,660 from the fund, and that is made up of our 2022 allocation of $199,000. And we also had a top-up in 2021 of $191,000. So we parked that money in 2021, and we're bringing it into the budget in 2022 for roads infrastructure projects. Moving on to provincial grants, previously mentioned, our OMPF funding. We still have some safe restart money, and we're drawing about $128,000 of that into the 2022 budget. We have our Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. The budget presented to you today is drawing $156,000. Actually, just midweek, we received an announcement from the ministry that they are increasing that funding. There was a redesign of the OCIF to consider the current replacement value to maintain municipal core assets in developing the funding model. And that there really aligns with the asset management plan that we had presented earlier this year in preparing to replace our assets at the current replacement value cost. So here, we're looking at a 2022 allocation of $364,433, and that is just over $200,000 more than what we're budgeting here at the $156,000. And then finally, our usual museum operating grant, the community museum operating grant of $16,000. So we'll move on to long-term borrowing. The 2022 budget includes $817,000 for debt repayment, broken out by debentures of $584,000, leases of $177,000, and internal loans of $56,000. The annual repayment limit for 2022 is $2456,000. The budget that we're looking at today will be drawing about 33% of that annual limit. So continuing with funding, the reserve balances are going to experience quite a bit of activity this year. The overall 2021 estimate at this point is looking at a reserve balance of $3.8 million. So the net activity for 2021 will contribute $143,000 to the reserve. The net budget 22 activity is a decrease of just under $7,000. So the reserves will remain relatively flat. The 2022 is looking at a draw of $807,000, and you'll note here some of the key items are purchases of equipment. And we do have some infrastructure projects that we're looking to carry over. We didn't get them done this year, so we would like to carry those funds over into the 2022 budget. We also see some transfers to the Development Reserve of $800,000 for our roads maintenance, our infrastructure, our equipment, and our perks in recreation capital. New this year, and majority of it is reflected under the transportation budget, is an increase for asset management planning. So overall, the increase throughout the entire budget, there is $172,000 to help close the funding gap for our asset management, and that is in align with what was presented in our plan earlier this year. Some of the carryover projects from 2021 include the sidewalk at Highland in York, Kinesis Lake landfill and land acquisition, the Wes Gilford land acquisition as well. The medical center doors, looking to replace those, and replacing the brine pump at the arena and roof replacement at the Rails and Gallery. So there are quite a few projects that didn't get done. Some of them are the background work is already started. It's just a case of not having enough time to get through those projects. So here we look at our reserve balances year over year, and 21 to 22 relatively flat. Keep in mind that we do have that injection for the asset management plan. One of the reserves to consider as well that's included in this funding here is our parking meter reserve. Typically, the revenues from the downtown parking get transferred into this reserve, and we do offset some of the staffing costs for managing the law enforcement. So in 2021, we saw a considerable drop in the revenues collected due to COVID. And so that particular reserve there is looking at about a $20,000 drop from what it consistently runs at year over year. So as mentioned, asset management has become a very integral part of our budget this year. On May, in May of 2021, council accepted the asset management plan. The plan at that time presented an asset replacement cost of $197 million. So although our current assets on our books are valued at about $80,000 right now, that is the cost that we actually pay to acquire those assets. If we were to replace those assets today, it would cost us $197 million. So that's broken out by two asset categories, one being our municipal operating assets, and that amounts to $156 million. And then we have our sewage treatment assets, which are just over $40 million. So one of the philosophies here in terms of managing the asset management is the life cycle funding gap, and that's what we've implemented throughout the budget for 2022. So that is defined as a life cycle funding target. So that would be the 197 million that we have to replace at some point in time, less the current annual contribution. So basically, that's what we're putting into reserves or saving for that future capital replacement for when it happens at that future point in time. So Chapter 4 of the Asset Management Plan provides the financing strategy, and the Asset Management Plan is posted on the municipal website. So looking at our funding gap again for municipal operating assets, we're looking at a 1.7% increase on the levy, and that's where the $172,000 comes from. Now, the funding gap for the sewage treatment plant is very different. This is a user pay system. It is a very stressed system at the moment in terms of trying to match revenues with operating costs. And because we don't have a lot of users on the system, the fixed costs are the fixed costs. So aside from fixed costs, you also look at capital improvements over time. And based on the recommendation from the Asset Management Plan, we're looking at an 8.1% increase on the ERU, which looks to be $690 for 2022. In 2021, the current ERU is $638. Likewise, there would be an 8.1% increase on the metered sewage rate as well. So one other point of interest I wanted to make here is, when you look at the audited financial statements and you look at our tangible capital asset schedule, that is based on cost. And an interesting item to note is, we have, at the end of 2021, $83 million of assets, and they are depreciated 57%. So that there also aligns with what we're looking at in our asset management plan, preparing to replace and rehabilitate those assets to make sure that we're well-equipped to provide municipal services. Okay, so moving on to expenditures by department. We can see here, again, transportation takes the lead. Our first three departments provide quite a few services to the municipality, obviously, our transportation, our environment, and our protection. So transportation is absorbing $143,000 of the Asset Management Plan proposed levy increase, and the other departments are absorbing a proportionate share. And that $172,000 was allocated based on the replacement cost, that $197,000 as a percentage amongst these different departments, amongst planning, recreation, environment, transportation, and so forth. Again, the key three largest expenditures to provide services in the municipality are transportation for our roads and bridges, environment for our landfills, and protection, which is policing, fire, and building. So now I'm going to just move on to the finance, our general government area of the municipal budget. And this budget here is proposing to participate in the University of Toronto Co-op program. It is a very structured and disciplined program, and what we're looking to do is engage a finance student through that program to automate our FIR reporting. And the FIR reporting is the annual reporting that we're obliged to provide to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. And there's a lot of work that goes into that project. Currently, we've hired our audit firm to complete that process. However, there's a lot of staff time that goes into that reporting in order to feed the information to the audit firm to actually complete the the reporting. So looking to take that in-house. It's projected to cost about $17,000, and based on the current rate we're paying the audit group now to complete it, it would be a five-year payback. The computer and software support in the general government is up over last year considerably, and there is quite a few new items that are happening. We've got some auditing software. We have accessibility and auditing remediation tools. We have a server upgrade for our Dynamics GP. We have firewall replacement. We have annual DOT software maintenance, which I've now moved out of transportation into the general government area because it's become more of an asset management tool. The DOT software is the integral software that is integrated into our asset management to provide us some of the the projects that we'll be implementing in 2022. Also, we have some extra software annual maintenance costs for CityView now implementing our building permit software. We have extra user licenses and with the portal for the building permits, there's some extra costs there as well. Contract services, you'll notice there's $50,000 there for the Dicard Strategic Plan, which is also being funded through the Municipal Modernization Fund. So the net impact on the levy is zero for that project. New this year is the electronics records management. We're looking to put a $20,000 provision into the budget for that. Actual implementation would not take place until 2023, but just trying to get a head start on that project there. And then there's one building maintenance item here. We're just looking to replace the carpet and flooring in the reception area of the municipal office. I just wanted to touch on grants. We have some requests here that we've received over the last few months, and this is to do with grants and donations. The current budget is at $87,950. And so we have two new requests this year, one coming from the Royal Canadian Legion to help them with the chairlift project, and their ask is $10,000. The other new request The other new request is from the Halliburton Highlands Outdoor Association. They're looking for some request on tax levy. What I presented here is the municipal portion only, which based on 2021 is $1,350. If you're looking at the total tax levy for the Halliburton Highlands Outdoor Association, which includes the county and the education, total there for 2021 was $2,964. So we have a couple of repeat requests here. In 2021, there was a one-time grant to the Gleep Park or Gleep Sculpture Forest for $75,000. They're now asking again for that request in 2022. And we also have the Halliburton Lake Cottage Owner Association. We give them a typical operating budget of this year at $1,700. And they're looking for an additional $1,000 to help with the beach maintenance and hire a summer student. So under the health area of our budget, which includes the cemetery and the medical center. Overall, expenditures under the cemetery are comparable to 2022 or 2021. For the medical center, again, comparable to 2021. However, we do have the front entrance doors. That project there is a carryover. So that is net zero on the levy because we're carrying over the funds from 2021. And the parking revenue, again, we're looking at a very modest revenue for the parking at the medical center. Due to COVID, just the way some of our tenants are doing business different by telephone. So people aren't actually visiting the building. And so we do have about $6,000 that will mitigate the lost revenue in the medical center for the parking. Now, I just wanted to comment, pre-COVID, that revenue stream at the parking for parking at the medical center ran about $50,000 a year. So it still is a huge loss. And depending upon how COVID goes and how businesses bounce back from COVID, $24,000 might be the norm. So for social and family services here, this is mainly our DMO bus. And basically, we were looking to replace the bus in 2021. That didn't happen. So the current unit has grown another year older. It's 12 years now. And we actually are in the process of having a tender posted and looking to see that that's replaced in 2022. And again, that will be drawn from the dedicated gas tax reserve. So net impact of zero on the levy. So in closing, I just wanted to share with the the group today. Again, this is a picture of how we spend our money and what where our tax dollars go. And again, we see transportation is taking up 34%. And protective services and the environment are respectively at 20% each. So here we can see three groups are taking up 75% of our budget. So on that note, I will open up the floor for any questions.
Hi, Barb, it's Larry.
Hi, Larry.
The Statistics Canada did their little census thing. Any any information coming forward in terms of just how much growth we've we've experienced as a community? And and as a result, the the impact on our on our our services, municipal services that we've had to respond to?
Yeah, I haven't seen any recent updates. I know the last information I've seen was 2016. So it could very well be that there is an update out there, and I will look into that.
Yeah, that's 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 pretty old, given what's happened. And COVID, I think, has had some major impact, I think, in terms of what has happened to this community and the people moving in and and the impact on on services. And again, on the real estate value. And it's unfortunate that impact's not going to be doing doing assessments because I think there could be a big impact in terms of what our revenue capability could be with the new, you know, with the with the revaluations. The other area of interest is with regard to climate and the impact that that's going to have on our on our assets, particularly roads and those kinds of things. And I don't know if there's opportunity within what you're you're planning to be able to track those changes. But I know, you know, with Rob having to plan for larger culverts, for example, or to deal with washouts. This is going to be something that's over and above what the norm has been over the years for us, you know, managing and maintaining our infrastructure. So those are, I'm just, I'm just looking at at ways of trying to, you know, kind of keep track of of what's day-to-day normal and what we're going to have to respond to going forward, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Great points, Larry. Barbara, I'll just get you to maybe unshare your screen now so we can have a, I can't control what I can see. So maybe the others can drag over. Thank you so much for that. And if I could just add to Larry's point about the impact assessment. It was discussed on Wednesday at the county that this would be of interest for all the municipalities. Why are they delaying? We don't really understand, just to use COVID as an excuse. And so I believe that it was something that was going to be taken forward. It's too late to go to Roma, which is in January, to request a delegation. But that we, the county would be requesting that impact be, I don't know, force the word or to 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 continue with the assessment. And they could, excuse me, take that to the AMO conference in August. Back to you to chair, Barbara.
Okay. Counselor Smith?
Thanks, Barbara. Well, just on that topic of the impact assessments. Just because our the assessed values of real estate in the property, in the municipality rises, it doesn't mean that our tax revenues need to rise. You know, if property values all go up by 20%, you know, we don't necessarily have to take a 20% tax increase. The, you know, the rate on per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value could actually be reduced and should actually be reduced if those values are implemented. And I think that they personally think the province did the right thing. Because, you know, we saw with COVID, some unusual patterns in terms of real estate prices. And and so for the shifting of the tax burden based on on a temporary phenomenon may not be the step to take. You know, and and the fact that climate change and and other factors are driving, you know, impacts in certain portions of our budgets. And it shouldn't be, you know, are considered right to simply raise taxes. Because of that, we need to find new ways of doing things. And as Barbara outlined, you know, a lot of investment in technology, new software and so forth. So that is to improve productivity. And 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 so again, you know, we'll need to be looking at that as we get into some of the details of the of the budget. Barbara, one question for you, just based on your introductory comments here. You mentioned having learned just earlier this week, middle of the week, I think you said, about the provincial infrastructure funding arising from what was in your charts, 156,000 to 364,000. That extra $206,000, $208,000 rather. Will that be something that we could utilize to drive down the proposed increase here of 7.56? To drive that down by about 2%? Given that we get a little over $100,000 per 1% of of tax increases?
Yeah, good question. So that would be a an item that council would have to decide whether they want to absorb some of that extra funding into the budget. I know that we, just looking at the Asset Management Plan, we have some notable projects coming down the pipe. And under bridges, we know bridges cost a lot of money to replace, rehabilitate, repair. So again, that's up to council on how they want to administrate that money. From a staff recommendation, I would recommend to park it for some of those bigger projects that are coming down the pipe.
Okay, so that's something that we'll have a chance to talk about after we get through the whole overview here. And council gets into making more detailed decisions regarding individual aspects of the budget very much.
Thank you. Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you. Great presentation so far, and both my questions have been answered, so thank you.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Just to, you know, I know as we go through this, and you highlighted the the U of T co-op finance student in general government as an incremental staff. And and I noted going through the material that was provided to us earlier this week. There's there's actually quite a number of staff additions, proposed staff additions included in the in the various departments. And and so might I ask for the, you know, for maybe for the next budget presentation that there actually be a summary chart that, you know, lists all of the proposed staffing increases so that council can look at that and, you know, not just look at the individual items, but consider the the merits and the impacts of of those staffing increases across the board. Thank you.
So thank you very much for that question and comment. And you will notice throughout the presentation that each department manager that is requesting additional staff will speak to their request and provide details. So I do believe there is some top level information in the presentation that would give you some of the numbers there in terms of the cost to bring new staff onboard. But we can, we can put together just a top level summary for the next budget presentation if council wishes for that.
All right, thank you. I think that would be helpful just because it's, as I said, it's, you know, it's it's correct. It's it's there in each one. But, you know, council's going to have to look at the whole budget and and obviously have to make some difficult decisions because a tax increase of 7% is just not viable, in my opinion. And part of that is going to have to be, you know, looking at the the merits of the this proposed staff increases. Not just individually, but body in total and having to make some trade-offs there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kamara.
I think you, I think there is merit to needing to understand the overall picture of it. But at the same time, those decisions need to be made based on those departmental requests because somebody in perks doesn't affect anybody in planning. Like, I think we really have to depend on what's within the departmental information. And you can still make your decisions accordingly. But I don't think that overall picture of staffing changes anything within the departments.
So so just to conclude, there was one counselor suggested we have an overall high level of just the staff increases in in one separate document. But that's if all of council wishes, it is in there in each department. So maybe Counselor Smith, hold that thought of that request as we go through the departments today. And at this point, I think we'll we'll just hold off on that. And then if there's a desire later, bring that point up if you don't mind. And we'll see if there are other counselors agree to that.
So for further clarification, I understand the request to be the new positions that are being presented throughout the 2022 budget. Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll move on to the next department, and I will go back to sharing my screen. Okay, so we're going to move on to the fire department. And our fire chief, Mike Isles, will speak to the material that he's presenting today. So someone can let me know once Mike is has joined us?
Laurie's bringing him in.
Okay, all right. And then I'll advance the slides.
Yes, we'll just wait, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara, can you stop sharing for one minute? Laurie just needs to do something technical here first. So if you do stop sharing. I have the weather and some high-level news bulletin coming across on my screen. So we're just gonna, we're just going to I'm not sure if that's showing on everybody's screen. You don't see that on the bottom right? Okay. But I believe we're the one that says the YouTube.
Good morning, Barbara.
Okay. We're just gonna wait one sec till we till in here, if you don't mind. Because I can't get Barbara to share the screen for fire yet. It is minus two. Oh, there we go. I had one of these, a pop-up came up on our screen here in the office. Okay, we're ready to go. I'll turn my mic off and I guess turn it over to Mike.
Okay, so I'll advance the slides, Mike. And once you're done, if you just say next slide, I can move them on. Thanks. And I'm going to share my screen. Okay, take it away.
So thank you. Here's my presentation, 2022 budget. And just the picture of the fire hall, next slide. Next slide, just a wintry day, what we go through. There's a few slides in here which are pictures, just to give you an idea of what we've done in in the past year. So very first slide is the wages. Couple of notable things, CPR training is done every three years. So let's chunk of money. Other than that, sort of the regular increases for wages and and for volume of calls. Next slide. Just to call, orange was in, and and this is what we do when we're out in the field. Next slide. Material and supplies is usually one of my bigger items. Most of this is virtually all this year's budget for the material and supplies is replacements and upgrades to some of the warranted equipment. The radio, we did our handheld radios, we went digital. We still do not, we haven't done anything to our paging system, which is is older. So a couple of the electronic components ideally should be replaced there. One of the upgrades is a repeater, which we put in a truck and it allows us to operate more effectively from our handhelds. Gives us a better signal through the truck and back to the base. So that's one of the items. The other big item is airbag replacement. There, I'll show you a couple of pictures in a second so you understand. But basically, they're they're a rubber product, just like your tires wear. There are suggestions that they probably have a 15-year lifecycle. So the rest of it's, a lot of it's BP and regular replacement. Next slide. So this is what I'm talking about, the airbags, lifting bags. They're used to put under any item or to lift an item. Next slide, please. And there's a better indication of how we use them. So that's one of the items proposed. Next slide. Equipment inspections, very similar to last year. All the equipment we use requires annual inspection. The bunker suits are included in there. They need regular cleaning. And as part of the cleaning, they're inspected. So next slide. Recent structure fire rat shows the environment we work in, the importance of the PP and and the SCBA and all the equipment we use. Next slide. Building maintenance, this is the one item that is higher. Barbara can maybe mention, I think this went in the capital, it's, but it's Barbara can maybe mention, I think this went in the capital, it's, but it's the flat roof on a portion of the fire hall. Needs to be replaced and that's $25,000 ticket, so that's above and beyond what we spent. In the building maintenance in the past. Next slide. This is a current picture, that's our snowmobile rescue sleigh, and this was actually orange. Landed in a very remote area to extricate a patient that was obviously medical needs. So, next slide, please. Computer support, very similar. We have two or three softwares that we use and that's just the annual renewal of those. Next slide, please. Another smaller fire, but still a structured fire that we attended. Once again, the end typical scene that we attend. Next slide, please. This is the same as as it has been for several years. This is a high on these contract. It's a dollar value plus incidentals per call, and it's roughly $40,000. Next slide, please. Yet another snowmobile incident. Once again, we're fortunate to have Orange and our support. Orange actually landed on the lake here to help us with the patient. Next slide. This is similar and has stayed fairly constant. There's some slight increases with the M and R. Every year. But and with the dispatch, but it's incremental, so it's a similar number to last year. Next slide, please. The, another addition for this year is emergency management fund of $5,000. Primarily, that will probably be spent for. Training and the exercise program that we're required to do. Will give us the ability to hire in a qualified instructor and and perform that training that's required. Next slide. Once again, you've seen similar to this, just a perk for recruit. Bernie, recruit plan, our NFPA 1001 training. Has been incredibly successful through the county. We're just in the progress of starting another course. It'll be 19 students. Across the county partake. It's it's been very successful and very well accepted. Next slide. Vehicle repairs. Last year, you'll see the truck pump rebuild for $15,000. There was one that. Is gonna be carried over from this year. It will be going in January for a pump rebuild. The second truck that's older, I suspect it's on the borderline of of. Needing a rebuild, so I budgeted $15,000 again this year. That should be the end of those high expensive repairs for those, I hope. Next slide. And just a reminder of COVID and the wonderful appreciation we've had over the last couple of years and a couple of. Thank you. So that's the end of my presentation. Is there any questions?
Barbara? I'll just start it off, if that's okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see there are other hands and I should act like every other counselor. Is there, and I know we also were sent earlier this week, but it's not gonna be on our screen today and and I don't have access to my computer where I downloaded the line by line. Mike, is there a percent increase that you could tell us of what fire cost in? 2021 to the increase to 2022?
Very flat. I think it's a marginal increase. Barbara can tell you better than I can, but I think it's, it might be half a percent or less, but Barbara, can you answer that?
Yeah, I'll just take a quick peek here. And so the net impact over 2021 is an increase of $13,531. Or that represents. A 2.17 increase over last year. Fire net expenses. Okay, other questions? Okay. Counselor Wood Roberts?
I just wanted to ask Mike for for the increase in the wages. What does that? Increase equate to in dollars per hour for the volunteers?
To the present pay rate?
Yeah, like how much of an increase will that be?
To be $18 and change, maybe 1850.
And right now, they're get, what do they get right now?
I think it's 1818. Once again, Barbara can clarify that exactly, but I think it's. 1818 plus 1.5%.
Yeah, they'll be going up to 1845 on a 1.5.
I personally would like to see that increase, if at all possible, if there's wiggle room anywhere in the budget. These people are pretty committed and. I just, I just think they deserve more. That was all.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. A good report here. A question, probably after refresh my memory. I see that the revenues have been up substantially over the last two years over what you had budgeted and now you've made the adjustment. Is that from a better? Reclaiming funds from insurance companies and that type of thing, or can you just maybe, it was historically 35,000 budgeted. Last year, we had almost 56,000 so far, so just it's a great thing to have happen.
It typically gets skewed and and not reflective. There was probably 14 or 15,000 dollars in equipment that the firefighter association purchased. So that ends up in that. Yes, quite often the revenues are higher this year. I think the revenues are pretty. Close to what was budgeted, so.
Thank you. The other part, Barbara's, we have 25,000 in here for the replacement of the roof. Might that be a candidate for the community infrastructure fund enhancement?
The Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund?
Community infrastructure, yeah. Is that a possible candidate if we decide to go that route?
Offhand, I don't know, but I can look into that and get that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you. Mike, good overview and especially when we see all the different equipments and and things you're dealing with. It really kind of gives a good snapshot of what you're having to deal with on an ongoing basis. And and it's good to see the focus on the maintenance. The I've seen other situations where because some stuff's not used on an ongoing basis, they'll get a bolt in the water. Some fire bunch departments are gonna blow the water and it won't go. You know, and the last thing you want to be dealing with, you know, you know, equipment issues or whatever, when you're trying to respond to an emergency situation. My real question for you is, is over the course of the year, a lot more. Calls with regard to medical and and medical assist type of situations or or. Is there anything that can be done to, you know, assist your team in terms of responding to those kinds of things like, you know, there. I know there's probably defibrillators and those kinds of things, but are there other aids that could perhaps. Assist your team going forward since this seems to be a bigger and bigger part of their job?
When it comes to medical, we're we're actually blessed with the fact that we're in town with the EMS. Typically. Most times they're on scene and we're supporting them. And we are also only trained on a. Very similar CPR and and first aid training that you would take as as a layperson, so we're not qualified to do a lot beyond that. Typically, our medical call comes down to assisting with quite often lifting and extrication. I've done more CPR calls in the last couple of years than I've probably done in my lifetime. So we will assist in a case like that. We quite often even ride in the ambulance back, so. Typically, we're alongside and we're relying on their their equipment and expertise, so. The rescues and that sort of thing, we're staying on top of the ice water rescue. Some of that gets kind of tied in with the medicals, but yeah, I. There's not a lot of equipment for the medical and I have bought a few smaller things to to augment the.
Okay, any other questions? All right, on that note then, thanks, Mike, for presenting today and we'll move on to the next department.
Thank you.
So the next department is building and Carl will be presenting building and bylaw.
So Barbara, just the technical side, we need you to stop sharing, so sorry about that, so that Lori can bring him in and then I'll get you to share again. And there's Carl.
Okay.
And so now you can share screen. Thanks.
I'll get there. Okay, so take it away, Carl.
All right, good morning, everybody. So building department, I've only got a couple of slides, one for building and one for bylaw. I don't have one of those fancy pictures, but. So basically, the highlights of the 20. 2022 budget. So again, continue with new staff training. Again, it's like we're constantly in a state of training because constantly getting, having to replace our staff. So hopefully, we're able to hold on to our staff and that's the reason why I'm not asking for more staff, because I think with a properly trained staff and staff that are. Here longer than a year, we're able to keep up with a little. So the private portal, mobile inspections. So we're hoping to have that. So last council meeting, you might have remembered that I said that we can have that on track for January. That's now pushed to February because we did find a critical error during our testing of the system, so. That's again, with the holiday time, like that doesn't make sense to try and rush that in. IT is also also having to contribute a lot of their time, which they don't have. To help with those requirements. So again, the portal, system. Mobile inspections. That is going to be implemented in February. 20% increase in permanent. So again, yeah, that's basically what we're dealing with. It might be the norm. It's, we'll have to wait and see. We're not sure what exactly we're we're looking at. The percentage of value increase in construction value. Again, there's only so many lots out there, but people are rebuilding. They they see value in the properties that they're purchasing, their investing money in the municipality to build here. Again, not bad things, just increases the work that we're doing. Additional vehicle for inspection. So you'll see that. With the with the bylaw, we are looking for a summer position with with bylaw to help with bylaw. With that, we currently share a vehicle with the bylaw department, so we currently have a two. Two vehicles dedicated to the inspections, but we need three inspectors out. On most days during the week. So it leaves bylaw department without a vehicle for a lot of the time. And we're hoping to have three dedicated vehicles for the building department, just so that we can be more efficient. And be able to get through all the inspections that we need to get to. And that would be a capital item coming out of building reserves, which is basically a. The overrun of permanent fees that we collect. Large format scanner. So that's one of the items that we're looking at. Bringing in because we want to start digitizing our older files. Getting, we're we're definitely run out of storage space for building current files, so we want to basically. Digitize our older files, moving backwards from from this year on. Anything that's going to be digitized. With that, there's going to be a capital cost of the of the equipment itself. As well as storage capacity on account servers. So we've budgeted a certain amount to Barbara for funding, and I can't remember what that is, on that for the capital item. Of the budget servers. And we went to the high end. There may be savings because the county may be able to. Cover a portion of that when they're going through their server updates in the next next year. So there, again, we budgeted for the maximum, we figured it's going to be, but it it may be less. The building, that's basically it. Otherwise, the costs, all of our budget items are typically. Remain the same, our training budget isn't really increasing, staying the same. Our fuel cost is gonna increase just because the price of fuel is increasing. And our, so if you do bring in additional vehicle, there'll be a cost for insurance, additional cost for fuel, that additional cost for maintenance, so. Those those costs would increase with an additional vehicle as well. Next slide. So again, by law enforcement, not a lot of change with regards to that, other than the new summer by law enforcement position. So we didn't, we're not calling it a summer student position, we're calling it a summer position, so. We'll see, we'll see what we can get, if it's approved for summer position. Again, that position is going to be mainly focusing on. Downtown parking issues, park issues, items where they can. Where they can walk to and and patrol. These are 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 things that are have been. A little lax in the last year only because the increased workload that we're dealing with. Again, a lot with the zoning bylaw, so the. It or or. It'll allow the our bylaw officer to concentrate on the items that are of of greater importance or greater. No manpower, things that take a training, train bylaw officer to to handle. The summer position would basically be, you know, parking fines, those types of things. They'd also, they'd also be able to accompany bylaw officer on calls where they might need an additional person as a witness or just in case it's gonna be an issue. And again, continuing staff training. So again, bylaw officer's new position as well, he's. Been here for almost a year. And again, training is is still required. So they did close the. Dravenus, Dravenus Fire College, where we bylaw officers typically do their training as well, so they've opened one up in. In Aurelia with the university in Aurelia, that's that's there, the campus that's there. And that's where the train's gonna be. So it's not a whole lot. Partly that they're gonna have to travel for training, but they're gonna be traveling. For training and. I think that's all the items for bylaw enforcement. The cost of the vehicles are all gonna be captured out of the bylaw or the department, so bylaw's not gonna have an additional vehicle expense. Even though we're gonna be. Almost exclusively allowing them to use one of the vehicles, so I'm gonna capture the building. Any questions?
Counselor Clark?
Hey, thanks, Carl. I see some good investment in terms of of your getting some new technology and you have some portal stuff happening. Looking at a high level across the province in terms of of the building departments, the 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 key concern has been the timeline for applications getting processed. And it's been seen as a bit of a barrier in terms of trying to address some of the issues on housing shortages and all kinds of stuff. Any chance of maybe maintaining some metrics? I know you've got some, you've got new some new software and. Train that's happening on that. Can you? Kind of give us an update from time to time if you if you're able to reduce some of the processing times, that kind of thing?
So, yeah, so our, yeah. Yeah, it's good, good question. So our our processing time is very quick, so. We have a 10-day timeline when we're supposed to process an application. We do it in three. So even even our busiest times. I'm the, I'm the only one that's right now trained to do plan review, so I do all the planner. And so that's gonna be part of the training this year is to train somebody else to have to be planned with you, so I can focus on some other things. So the, again, we haven't had an issue with the timelines. The only lag in timelines is. We've implemented a zoning review that's. we've implemented a zoning review that's in addition to the building. So right now our permit clerk does our zoning reviews, which allows frees up some of our so the it goes through an additional review, whereas the permit clerk or the sort of the plans examiner will typically do the zoning review. It just goes through a different body, which means that just the file transfers to another person. So there may be a bit of a delay there. Again, we're still well within the timeline set the province sets out. Other municipalities I work for, we haven't been able to maintain those timelines. We've been like three months out of those timelines. So, you know, we're in a good position here. We shouldn't be getting those complaints with the length of time it takes us to process something.
Counselor Smith.
Yep, thank you. Thanks Carl. I appreciate that review and just with respect to metrics, I know you're doing a great job of turning around building permits. In terms of the speed with which that happens, the proposal for a summer student for by law enforcement, I think is is a sensible one. But it would be terrific if you could identify some metrics that could demonstrate, you know, both beforehand, what you expect, and then after the fact, we can see the difference that this additional resource made. You know, Rob's monthly report now tells us about the number of complaints he's had by category and how many are still open. But, you know, increasing the resource here and focus on bylaw ought to improve that. And because Rob can spend more time on those more complex cases. And, you know, and even something as simple as is parking revenue and and parking fines that are levied that we can see. You know, clear council reports back to council that demonstrate, yep, we spent X number of dollars on a summer student and we saw the value in that. The the second comment would relate to the the technology. You mentioned additional server storage capacity, for example. I'm presuming that the mayor and deputy mayor as part of county council get a chance to review, you know, the IT approach to delivering these services and and the dollars that are involved. But, you know, today, you know, some of the largest and most sophisticated organizations in our country are no longer installing their own servers or storage capacity. They're relying upon organizations like Amazon Web Services, Microsoft, even legacy companies like CGI and IBM to deliver the technology capacity required through the thing called the cloud. And it's very cost effective. Because, you know, having your own server room is an expensive proposition. And today, there's clearly no reason for, you know, any part of our county government to have its own IT infrastructure. These other organizations do a far more efficient job of it. And, you know, and save taxpayers money through that. So I'd hope that, as I said, the mayor and deputy mayor would be pressing for that kind of a transition as they're looking at the on the IT service. Thank you.
So to to go to your first one, funny you brought that up because I just, we were just talking about, Rob and I were just discussing the bylaw report to council and how could that could be improved and, you know, how we can better gain a sense of what's happening. I want, I was asking for something that's month to month so that we can see activity levels per month. And and, you know, similar to the building budget or building, building report to council, something that outlines what we do monthly so that we can see. So that some of the months were busiest and what's the activity? And yeah, so we used to, the previous reports used to outline the revenue collected through fines and parking meters, parking meter revenue, which I'm not sure if the new one does or not, but we want to bring that back just so we could see a little still set to my. Yeah, so if council wants to compare those and see what the, if a new level of new position does increase those parking revenues and fines, fine revenue, both type of things, definitely. With regards to the IT component, that was one of the the items that was brought up. I think Barbara, I think might have brought it up, or I was worse to the cloud and and yeah, IT's response was that the cloud is no cheaper than what what it takes to buy servers. Now servers have come way down in price. So again, I leave that to IT and to to figure out. And I'm sure that they're going to go the appropriate route when they do up through their servers. But yeah, good point.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Just to follow up on that, it, you know, it's when you're asking for incremental staff, it would be ideal for you to make the kind of commitment you're just making to say, here are the metrics that we're going to measure. And here's how much they're going to improve as a result of this staff. Because if you don't have that sort of justification, it becomes, you know, pretty mushy. And you know, as far as the county IT staff, every internal staff wants to resist the purpose of external servers services because, you know, that's attacking their job. It's attacking their raison d'etre. But as I said, you know, check public documentation. Cloud services delivered by the kinds of companies I mentioned are the fastest growing component of of technology in the world today. And it would shock me that our county IT staff is more efficient than global players. You know, like I mentioned, and and as I said, those other organizations, whether you talk to some of the biggest companies in Canada, banks and so forth, or whether you talk about small and medium sized businesses. They all find cloud to be tremendously cost efficient and very high service level. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Tamara?
I think Deputy Mayor Kennedy had a comment first.
I just recommend Counselor Smith take a look at the county budget presentation from last week and those documents are all available on the movement to the cloud rather than wasting time here today. My question goes more to the provincial offenses. Carl, we're spending $10,000 on prosecutor services to recruit 5,000 in fines. Is there, is this an opportunity here for us to review our fine structure? It just seems to me that it's not a good use of funds or is there a different way to do fines rather provincial offenses?
So every time we we want, we take something to court, we're always going to ask for costs back. So whatever it costs us to to prosecute something, we're going to ask for those costs back. Yeah, it says penalties. And typically, typically more so. I'm not sure how that's worded in the budget line items itself, but the the, what's that line item called, Barbara? Sorry.
There is the one expense there for prosecutor services under contract consulting.
Contract consultants. Yeah. So I think it includes items other than just the prosecutors. That's just one of the things that we're we're now increased to do to prosecutors. So it includes other items as well.
Thanks Carl. The note just said prosecutor services. So that's.
I think that's why it increased. Yeah, it's.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Carl?
I just think Carl, you should have included some pictures. I'm just saying, maybe next time you, costs are up 70% for building. I know lumber went up, but there are, if we all get out in the lakes where we live here at Dyserd and there's some pretty spectacular homes going up, seasonal homes in in the area. So.
There are definitely. And that's why I always tell people, I've got the best job in the world. I get the.
Pictures next year. Yeah.
Mallory?
Sorry, this is a question for both you and Mayor Roberts. Is it possible to take a break? Because we're coming up to that time.
I was going to suggest that.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Good look around the room. Good look on the screen. So let's, so for the questions for Carl, so let's call a recess. And we'll take 15 minutes. So that puts us back to 10:35. We'll reconvene. So we're in recess. Okay, and we are back in session now. So what we'll do is bring in our next staff member, which will be Kate. Oh, excuse me, there is Kate right in the middle of my screen. And so Barbara, back to you and to Kate. And so Barbara, if you want to share, do the share screen again.
Okay, take it away, Kate.
Thanks, Barbara. So I'm actually, I'm going to flip my camera off just because the meetings, a couple of things have come through a little garbled this morning. So just in case the problem's at my end, just to make sure we've got smooth sailing. So I'm going to flip my video off, but I'm still here. All right. So the Halberton Highlands Museum, as everyone will know, I'm sure, we got our start as a Canadian Centennial Project. So we have been preserving our community's history since the 1960s. And so and since, well, since 1980, the museum has been located in in Green Park and growing, growing over all that time. So we now have six buildings, five of which are actually over 135 years old. So five 19th century buildings as well. Okay, next slide, please. So in terms of what what we do at the museum, in addition to all of our amazing work with artifacts and local history, there there are all sorts of other components to what we do. And certainly over the last last couple of years, things have been a little bit different, but we'll get to that. So a museum is is a place that keeps our community's history safe and showcases it and shares it. But increasingly, we're seeing that museums are community spaces, providing that sense of connection, which, you know, in these unusual times has become more and more important for everyone. So it's a chance to learn new skills. Museums are very much associated with health and wellbeing, museums, galleries and and arts experiences as well. It's it's good for, good for everyone, you know, good for, good for the body, good for the mind. And also community identity. We find an awful lot of people when they first move to this area. Are curious, they come to us to find out more about this place that they've now decided to to make their home. And also those seasonal residents who perhaps are thinking about coming in and living up here full time or just want a a stronger connection with the history of the place where they they spend so much time and where they love to be. In addition to connecting with all of our local, our local visitors, tourists as well. But of course, we're also sharing our our community story as widely as possible. And really, in this day and age, that means we can share it with people all over the world, which is pretty neat. Next slide, please. So throughout the pandemic, you know, things have been have been rather different. And we've had a couple of long term closures. So a couple of times when we've been, because of lockdowns, we've been closed for four months. Other times when though we've been open, the people have been encouraged to stay home as much as possible. So it's it's been very, very different. Means we haven't been able to run some of the normal sorts of programming that we would, but we're getting, we're getting back closer, closer to that all the time. We've been connecting with people exploring locally and we've also been providing online content, which as I said, yet we're we're actually able to connect with people all over Canada, people who are who have a connection to the Halberton area, but are further afield at the moment are thinking about us missing the Highlands and also people all over the globe. So yeah, it's been different, but we're making the best of it and we're looking forward. So next slide. So in terms of our looking forward to 2022, as I think I mentioned earlier this week at committee of the whole, 2022 countrywide is expected to be a year of recovery. So we're going to see more people traveling. We're going to see people exploring more, but I think we are going to continue to reap those benefits of people exploring locally throughout this year. So we're looking forward to a year of bringing back more in-person programming and and keeping our plans flexible as as the year progresses, as this year of recovery comes comes together. So we're looking forward to bright days ahead. So next slide, please. So in terms of revenue for 2022, in terms of 2022 budget, we certainly have admissions in there. Admission to the museum is if I do by donation, that's very important to us. We also, in 2021, we got a a square. So now we also have the option for people to make their admission by donation through a through a square so they can do debit or credit, which is great. And we're going to continue, I'm sure, to see the benefits of that. As as more people are traveling, as more people are exploring, and as we know, you know, some people just don't, don't carry cash anymore. Also, our book sales, so we do sell a couple of books that we we get some benefits out of. So Halberton History and Pictures, which was published in 2008, but there are still still copies around. They can be purchased here at the museum. They can be purchased through the municipal office. And also we're going to have them in 2022 available at at the New Vista Center as well. So that'll be another spot for people to pick those up and also Fragments of a Dream. So book sales, book sales have been really good throughout the pandemic. Gee, gee, I wonder why people sitting at home looking, looking for things to read. Also then grants there. So our community museums operating grant, which has been steady for the last several years, $16,224. Okay, next slide. So just some some key expenses that that come up in the 2022 budgets, no, no real surprises here. So staff of two, myself, I'm the director of the museum and also our curator. And also a portion of wages for a summer student. The last couple of years, we haven't had a summer student just because of some of the uncertainty and closures and whatnot. But we expect that we will probably for 2022. But last couple of years, actually, that has been a, has been a bit of a savings because we haven't had that expenditure at our end. Programming and events, we're we're looking to getting back into doing more of that in person. That is also though, truth be told, an area where we've had savings over the last couple of years because we haven't, haven't been doing those kinds of programming and events. We also have money in the budget for exhibits, conservation, advertising. Sort of drumming things back up again, there's a lot that we can do certainly with our our social media. But it's it's nice to be able to connect with with print media and we know that people in our community, a lot of people, that's how they prefer, prefer to get their news. So but then again, though, because we haven't been doing a lot of events and in-person programming over the last little while, in recent years, we've saved on advertising. Other things, cleaning, we we have a cleaning crew that comes in and does a great job for us. Other things, office supplies, computer equipment, website. So we actually had thought, at one point, we were wondering about getting a new website for the museum. Because our current website that we have isn't actually accessible under AODA. So I talked to the the company that provided Dyserd's new website. We discussed options. the, the company that provided Dicerts, a new website, we discussed options. And to build a brand-new website for the museum was going to cost in the region of $22,000. And I said, no. But what we're actually going to do instead is we're going to take the museum's existing website content, and we're going to basically put it into the existing Dicert site in a different form. So we'll be able to do that at basically no cost, because we already have a page for the museum there, and we can build around what's there. And so that'll actually, that will probably mean a little bit of a savings as well beyond this. I'm saving, well, the, the cost of building a new, a new website, and also about $6,500 a year in licensing as well. Yeah, so if we can save that, then that's, that's wonderful. But it would have been absolutely amazing to get a brand-new site, but it just, it didn't seem like a cost-effective option for us at the time. And in addition, staff training, so courses and conferences, which will be coming back around again, and some of our essentially utilities. Now, we, we do, you know, we need to keep the lights on, and we need to keep the, we need to keep our main gallery space heated as well. So another thing I should mention, that in terms of the new, new web presence on the, on the Dicert site, we are also going to be putting in a, an option to have people make donations online there as well. So we're going to build that in, so that if people are, are sitting at home and enjoying online content from the museum and think, gosh, I would love to send them a donation, we'll have an easy option for them to do that as well. So we will certainly begin to, to reap the benefits of that moving forward. All right. Next slide, please. Okay, so this year, one of the, the big option, well, the big, big things that's come up on, on our radar is that we want to do some maintenance work on Reed House, which is one of the museum's historic buildings. So it was actually the museum's original home when the museum first opened. And it was the home of the Reed family for many years. The Reeds first came to the Halberton area in the 1870s, but the house itself was actually built in 1882. It was originally located on, on Park, on Park Street, about where the, the Park Lane Apartments are now. And the, the house was moved in the, well, in 1979, was moved up to, to Glee Park after having been the museum's home for, for a number of years already at that point. So it is, it is a typical village home of the time, and it's, it's a little bit of a flagship for us. But it's got, it has a couple of issues at the moment. And the big issue that is facing Reed House at the moment is that it, it has a bit of a problem with damp, a recurring problem with damp. And partly, this is because it's a building which is currently, and has for a long time, been unheated. So a house that has a plaster interior, plaster on the walls, and, and is unheated, is likely to have, have some issues, have some issues with, with damp. At one point in the, in the house's history, as part of the museum, it, it did have baseboard heaters in the basement of the house. The basement is not original to the house. The basement was put in when the, the house was moved to Glee Park in 1979. A additional basement was dug out. It did originally have a root cellar. They're a small root cellar, but a bigger basement was dug out. There was at one point baseboard heating down there, which was helping to keep a bit of the, the damp out of there. But the decision was made to remove, to shut off and remove those baseboard heaters as a, as a cost-saving measure at the time. But this, that has actually exacerbated the fact that it is, it is getting damp in there. So some of the recommendations that we've had, we had a company come in, very generously took a look at the place, company called Complete Restoration Services, who just said they would come in and, and give us some advice. They are recommending attic ventilation. So putting additional vents into the attic, that that will help with this, this dampness issue. Other things that they've recommended included removing some of the tree cover around the house. And so we had 13, 13 or 14 trees, fast-growing softwood trees, taken out from around the area, leaving the hardwoods, the slow-growing hardwoods. But they suggested that taking those out would help just getting more, more sunlight, more air, more light into the house. So that attic ventilation, also suggesting some work to change, change the flow of some of the, the water and drainage around the property. So we've started in on some of that as well, because of the way that the house, when it was moved to Glee Park, because of the way that it was placed on the site and essentially built into a little bit of a hill, it means that there can be issues with runoff. So we've started to do some work on that, but we certainly, we certainly have plans to do a bit more to redirect some of that moisture. Also, we've already bought a very large-scale dehumidifier, which we will be running during the warmer months in, in the basement of the house, try and draw some of that moisture out. So if we can draw the moisture out there, and we can draw the moisture out through, through the attic, then that will, will certainly be a help. Another issue in terms of the house is the chimney on the house definitely needs to, well, the chimneys on the house definitely need to be replaced, or there could be the option to remove them. We're having an issue with spalling on the chimney. Last time it was replaced, I believe, was probably about 2012, after there had been a moisture issue. It's, I'm not sure if it's just because the chimneys aren't actually being used. But it seems like the, the lifespan of a chimney on that building is, is very short. So whether we need new chimneys and also additional flashing, just to help keep the moisture out, because the last time the chimney was replaced, there had been moisture getting into the upstairs of the building. And certainly in 2013, we, we did a, a large, large-scale in-house bit of work to fix some of the upstairs bedrooms, because the moisture had affected those as well. And everything's holding on while they're still, but it, that is the kind of thing that could happen again if, if we don't do something about, about those chimneys and about adding additional attic ventilation in the near future. In addition, they've also suggested, just because of this moisture issue, getting some people in to do a deep clean on, on the kitchen. The, the kitchen actually is a summer kitchen on the, the back of the building. It, it was actually erected at the same time as the house, we believe. There was speculation for a while, but it may have been an addition. Rather than being built on in 1882, it may have been built several years later. We now think it is actually original to the building. But the, the issue of damp seems to have affected the kitchen in a, in a more dramatic way than, than the rest of the house. So that deep clean on, on the kitchen, once we've taken care of the other moisture issues, will mean that the, the house will be in a much better place moving forward. And that's actually going to help to protect this asset through, through the years to come. So yeah, that, I think that's me. If anyone has any questions, let me know.
Okay, thanks, Kate. So do we have any questions on the floor?
I'll just kick it off. Thank you, Kate, for that. And yes, we've, you know, been concerned with Reed House for some time. So I appreciate the consultation from the, that company that, that did that. It is something in, in future years, if, if we keep the budget as is, but in future years, we should be having a bit of a, in light of the asset management plan, a bit of a development, a reserve, some kind of reserve fund for the museum, so we don't have a hit like this in one year. We should be putting in monies aside, so that when a $23,000 project comes along, we've been putting in $5,000 a year. And then, you know, on year four, you are able to, to finance it without it all being on one year's budget. And I do have a slight concern is, once the work starts, that it's going to cost more than estimate, because that almost is inevitable. So I do think that we should be, this is more for not for this year's budget, but for future budgets.
All good. Councilor Smith?
Thank you. And thanks, Kate. You know, one can't help but admire your, your passion, your, your knowledge and your commitment in terms of serving our, our local history. I'd like a counselor to spend a few minutes thinking about the museum as we prepare for our future budget, or we can do anything for the 2022 budget. And three years ago, when we were building the budget for 2019, I had raised a concern about the museum and the fact that 95% of the costs of, of operating the museum were being borne by taxpayers. The proposed budget for 2022 has taxpayers bearing more than 97% cost of operating the museum, but nearly $220,000, and just $6,000 coming from book sales and, and donations. In our community, there are many organizations which have found ways to cooperate, and particularly enabled by technology through the pandemic, where people who are committed to something, you know, invest in it through membership fees, through donations, even through sponsorships. I, myself, in addition to being a part of some of these local groups, part of an organization that runs online sessions on topics as obscure to some as wartime mail delivery to Canadian soldiers. This organization sells memberships to people who can propose topics to be presented. That's a privilege of membership, if you like. Sponsors who are interested in, in reaching this audience pay to be, to have their brand or their business promoted as part of it. And, and people make donations because they're committed to it. And, and I think instead of just continuing to increase the taxpayer contribution, the property taxpayer contribution, the museum, it's up to council to challenge the staff to engage in some of these techniques and find ways of, of raising funds from those who are really committed to preserving our local history. People who see value in that, people who want to be engaged, maybe have, instead of just showing up in social media, maybe have presentations from people like Kate, who've got deep knowledge and have a chance to participate in that, even online, ask questions, and, and so forth. And, and so to me, you know, there's an opportunity there that, you know, council needs to, to be committed to, and then challenge our staff to engage in, and, and find ways to, to help reduce the taxpayer contribution to the museum.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Counselor Wood Roberts?
Oh, I, I just, John was talking about how he, John was saying how he said, you know, there's lots of memberships available. I don't think privilege of membership can apply to public assets. I just think it's there for the public, and everyone has equal access. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Roberts?
Thank you. You know, there's, there is something to be said for that, though. There's a lot of organizations, even the Library Board, which is publicly funded by county. So it has an organization called Friends of the Library. And they're able to be a separate association who are invested in because they love the library, and they do fundraising events from selling of, you know, secondhand books. And also, they weren't able to do it the last two years, but their galas, where they do a, bring in an author, and, and they do lunch and learn. They do quite a few things. And then they're able to work with the CAO of their CEO, whatever, of the library, to fund things that aren't normally funded. So perhaps this is something that we could take to the Glee Park and Museum Committee and see if, you know, what, what's the appetite of the public of Dicert to form a Friends of the Museum Committee, or some such thing, and which could have a council representative. And, and, and their main goal is, or one of their mandates could be fundraising. And I think it is something that we should investigate in the new year. So I, I will bring that forward at the next Glee Park Committee meeting, whenever that is.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thank you. You know, and, and just to follow on that, membership doesn't necessarily mean you have to be a member to be admitted to the museum. But there could be programs at the museum that are only open, just as there are today, that those who pay a fee, those could be members. So a variety of ways of tackling this, even within the, the premise of a public asset. And, and so, you know, I'd like to see this, this budget for 2022, that there be something in it that is contingent upon finding ways to engage the community and drawing their support from those who are interested, rather than just kind of the general property taxpayer. I'll look forward to having a chance to chat further about this and hearing more from, from the mayor and others on it. Thank you.
Counselor McKechnie?
Yes, of course, I'd like to see the money that the taxpayers contribute to the museum reduced, like, like every other counselor and every other taxpayer. But I also am very proud of our museum. It's been around a long time. And if we can raise some money some way, fine. But if we can't, let's just keep the thing open and making it bigger and better. You never want to forget our past. And so that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no further questions, then I will move on.
Thank you.
Thanks. So we'll bring in the staff first, and then we'll do share screen for planning. Just wait till I see Jeff's smiley face. He's on his way. Okay, so there we have Jeff. So just, Jeff, just give one sec, Barbara will, well, share screen, and then you can take it away.
Okay, so now we're on to planning, and we'll turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, and good morning. The proposed budget I'm presenting today is pretty standard with one outlying request. In this presentation, I'm going to review planning application numbers, revenues associated with these applications, expenses, including big-ticket items and legal, some projects planned for 2022, and a staffing update. Feel free to ask questions at any point during the, the presentation. Next slide, please. Okay, looking at planning revenues, this chart indicates planning application numbers. The chart shows the three-year average, budgeted numbers for 2021, projected application numbers for 2021, which are the actual numbers for this year. And lastly, projected application numbers for 2022. Historically, application numbers have remained pretty consistent from year to year, with minor fluctuations. However, as you can see in the graph, you will notice a nice increase in projected application numbers for this year. However, as you can see in the graph, you will notice a nice increase in projected application numbers for this year. Just more on that, most application types, including minor variances, zoning by law amendments, severance proposals, road closing applications and agreements have all doubled what we, we had projected for 2021. So this is a positive. But needless to say, it's been a busy and productive year for the department. And I do give credit to staff for that, for their hard work and output. When projecting the numbers for 2022, I have taken a reserved approach. For the most part, I continue to use a three-year average for these proposed application numbers. Looking at the, the numbers from this year, I probably could have aimed higher, and I think the numbers will be higher. However, I, I prefer to come in over budget at the end of the year as opposed to under budget. If there are no questions, can we move to the next slide, please? So this chart indicates the resulting revenues received from planning applications. As you can see in the graph, the revenues have had a nice increase on the actual numbers for 2021. And again, I, I expect these numbers to continue. Based on my reserve, reserved application projections, which result from historic trends and ongoing discussions with developers, I project a modest increase for, for the, for most application types in 2022. Next slide, please. So this chart summarizes the total revenues received from planning applications. As you can see, 2021 projected revenues are up approximately 82% over last year's budgeted numbers. I also want to mention that it doesn't quite tell the entire story. In addition to the application revenues, the land costs alone from the 26 projected road closing applications this year will contribute a minimum of about $100,000 to the development reserve once these applications are completed. And that number is actually likely close to $200,000. Looking at the 2022 numbers, as per the graph, the 2022 proposed revenues indicate a modest increase of 42% over the 2021 budget. Are there any questions about revenues before I move on to expenses? We'll go to the next slide, please. So switching to expenses, some of the big ticket items which remain consistent from year to year and make up a majority of the planning expenses are staff wages, benefits, and various legal fees. Another notable expense is staff training, such as primer on planning for the one-year contract position that we are looking to fill right now for the maternity replacement. Of note, I am also proposing that the committee of adjustment members receive a slight increase from $6 per meeting to $100 per meeting, plus mileage. This will bring them in line with the other lower tier municipalities within the county. There is a slight error on this slide. Please note that the Culture Resources Committee budget still appears to be included in the planning budget. So I apologize for that error. Planning that no longer administers this committee, but looking at the budget line, the proposed budget line item is again $3,000 for 2022. Next slide, please. Taking a deeper dive into legal fees, these funds are used to protect municipal land, public interests, and defend council and committee decisions. As always, legal fees are difficult to predict. I mean, I'm anticipating and requesting $15,000 for 2022. In this year, these funds have mostly, mostly been allocated to ongoing legal matters, obtaining legal services, but also obtaining surveys and background studies associated with municipal projects. The planning legal reserve, which is a bit of a good news story, this was one of Barbara's creations, which started a few years ago. Apparently has a balance of $45,000. So if legal and engineering costs exceed what we're requesting, we can always draw on this reserve. Next slide, please. Moving on to G I S. G I S also includes graphic design, mapping, data management services. It's not just, just G I S. G I S software costs are mostly allocated and divided amongst various departments. I think most departments here. The software and hardware are, are used by most departments and help to provide a public service while, while increasing staff production. In 2021 and moving into 2022, the building department is really taking advantage of, of these capabilities and are upgrading their, their function and services to include CityView Portal, which is an online tool for permitting, as well as CityView Mobile, which allows staff to take the, the CityView software with them on inspections on their, or using their mobile devices. These changes have resulted in one additional license, but it increased annual fees for the, for the CityView software. Lastly, I, I continue to note this, these costs are easily recovered in staff production while also providing a service to the taxpayers. So it is, it is a decent sized expense, but it's easily covered. Next slide, please. 2021 has been a productive year for applications, but also projects. And we continue, expect that to continue. We currently have one active appeal to a minor variance decision. We have chosen not to defend this decision and instead allow the applicants and opponents to present and defend their own cases to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, staff do anticipate that we will receive one or two appeals in 2022. There tends to be a correlation between appeals and large developments. So that's kind of why I'm looking in this direction. As most of you know, there are numerous large scale developments proposed and at various stages of approval. Staff can also continue to have discussion with developers for exciting developments, including various residential proposals, which, as we all know, is, is a big need for the community. So this year looks to be promising in that respect. Planning has a couple of active ongoing legal matters that we continue to work through. The service delivery review process, that's something we continue to participate in. I think one of the positives that's coming through that process, at least in the planning review, is the reviewing coordination of municipal feet, the municipal fee structures. This will result in, I think, a substantial increase to most fees to more accurately reflect the cost to administer the application processes. One area of focus is a tiered fee structure we're looking at. So the design is to separate minor developments from major developments. So that we can appropriately charge large developments without unnecessarily charging simple, simple applications. And the reason for this is that many of these major projects these days are taking one to two years to process. And sometimes one year of correspondence before we even receive an application. So we're certainly not receiving enough to cover the municipal costs currently, which essentially is tasking the general taxpayer to subsidizing that process. So I think that's a positive and I'm looking forward to that happening. Moving on to G I S projects for this year, Danielle continues to improve various aspects of our G I S services. I think most of you have seen the updated website. She's also exploring options to improve the public facing documents, including a map that shows all active applications within the municipality. Currently, we updated our website to provide more information to, to the public so that they can see a material associated with these applications. But we're looking at developing a map so that they can, can see the location of these two, just provide that as a public service. Internally, from the data storage, it's not as exciting, but Danielle has been working at modernizing and converting our spatial data from shape files into geo databases, which, which is awesome and time consuming. This will save staff time and storage on our servers going forward. Moving on, a lot of the development, I keep kind of hammering on this, a lot of the develop, I mean, a lot of our focus in 2021 was again on development control and staff inquiries. Public inquiries may not necessarily meet the definition of a project, but I continue to include it on this list as it seems to be where we continue to allocate a lot of resources. And to help with that, the creation of public facing documents, it continues to be a priority for us. Unfortunately, policy updates, procedures, that kind of, that kind of stuff continues to receive less attention than needed. Next slide, please. Moving on to the staffing update, I recently attended the Personnel Committee with two requests. As, as you are most likely aware, the G I S planning technician will be taking parental leave for, for the majority of the 2022 year. The, she intends to work part-time, which approximately 10 hours per week during that leave. You're in the midst of the recruiting process for a one-year contract to fill this position. Pat and I, or the deputy mayor and I, I should say, held interviews yesterday, and I, I thank the deputy mayor for that. The mat leave replacement position is a one-year contract with a 35-hour work week. The reduced hours, that 35-hour work week combined with the time spent on parental leave by the current staff member will result in a similar impact to the overall budget. In addition, I'm also requesting a new staff person. The proposed position is for a planning assistant. While this request does not necessarily come easy, I try to see it as a positive, given that the request is a result of increased development in the community. Needless to say, large development applications and small, most small scale application numbers are way up, as per the charts I showed you previously. This is a positive for revenue. So and it's a positive for community development, but it is an increased work for existing staff. The proposal is that this position will help out with some of the planning reviews and application processes. They will be able to take on a lot of the administrative work of currently being done by myself and the senior planner, such as preparing and circulating notices, preparing bylaws and agreements, which are sometimes pretty template and can be at least formatted by a staff person and reviewed by upper staff. A lot of the correspondence and, and account management as well, something this person could work on. And I've mentioned it before, the number of planning related inquiries continues to increase and it has been difficult to manage. The intent is that this new staff will act as the primary contact. This position, the proposed position will require planning knowledge. And the intent of this is that this person will be able to resolve many of the calls prior to them to reaching senior staff. Internally, the intention was for compliance letters, zoning inquiries, that kind of thing to be shared with the building department. But again, there were folks similar to ours and, and that hasn't necessarily materialized. So the, the proposed position will keep those tasks in the planning department. As mentioned, policy and legislative updates, public, public facing documents, guides, that kind of stuff are currently being completed on a reactive approach as opposed to a proactive approach. So that's something we want to improve on. A new staff member will allow senior staff time to focus on outstanding policy updates, such as zoning by law amendment to, to incorporate saunas, that kind of thing. But also look forward to things and create documents to help just improve the overall function. Internally, we've discussed and debated this proposal. I think the million dollar question, it's probably on all of our minds, is whether this influx of population increased development will continue. I recently attended a webinar put on by the Home Builders Association. It was, it was titled Baby Needs a New Home. And it was projecting Ontario's growing numbers of families and their housing needs. And if you saw the yesterday's Highlander, that webinar was summarized in the paper. But the analysts indicate that the increase in population was anticipated prior to the COVID pandemic and will continue after it. So based on this information, I think it's reasonable to assume that development, housing, application numbers, these are all going to be higher than I actually projected in this presentation. I have prepared a list of primary duties, if you'd like more information in that, on that. And I guess, are there any questions before I move on to the, to the bottom line? Next slide, please. So again, we're, we're, the bottom line, we're projecting a net planning increase of 21%. A majority of this increase relates to that staffing request, which I, again, I try to see as a positive. I hope and I think there will be an increase in the projected application numbers and application fees that will help to mitigate, mitigate and offset that proposed increase. Just looking at numbers, if the application revenues maintain the levels from this year, that number drops to about an 11% increase. And that doesn't even mention the, the increased application fees that we're discussing through service delivery review. So that really ends my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that council has.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. So we'll open the floor up to questions. And Counselor Clark?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Jeff. I attended that same webinar you're talking about, Ontario Home Builders Association. And I think what's happened with COVID is, is that it's just exacerbated the, the whole growth in the area. But even as you mentioned, even without that, I think we're seeing very significant growth. And what I'm seeing right now is with the current staffing levels, all we're doing is firefighting and responding. We're not doing anything proactive. I think for us to have, you know, some, some reasonable planning in place to address such things as recreation housing, we've got to be proactive, which means you need staff. The idea of outsourcing to contractors to kind of do these on a project basis is not the solution. The best knowledge comes from our own staff, our own department heads. So therefore, we have to beef up your support group to be able, for you to be able to focus on being proactive and giving us the planning resources and structure we need. So very much support what you're talking about. Thank you.
Mayor Roberts?
Thank you. And thanks for that, Jeff. And I know it's always, it's a hard ask and you were humble about that because it takes a long time for staff to reach that sort of tipping point. And I do think that we're there in the planning department. Planning is one that's supposed to be revenue neutral. However, there's a certain amount. I'll refer to the fact you're talking about the two fees for applications. We need to have some kind of deposit from people. We have so many applications that have not come to the council table yet, but we're all aware of, of them, most of them certainly, and most of them are large housing applications, where the planning department works hundreds of hours prior to us receiving a penny. So I think we're going to have to have some kind of deposit on account in anticipation for staff time for these. It does, you know, we know that that does help to economic growth, et cetera. But at the same time, it shouldn't be on the burden of the taxpayers, all taxpayers. It should be on the burden of the applicant. We don't have development charges. So anyway, I'm really looking forward to seeing a, a change in the fee structure.
But if I may just comment on that, Mayor Roberts, one of the, the fees that we are discussing and is in place in many other municipalities, pre-consultation fees. It's not something we currently have. If people want written pre-consultation about what will be required for proposed development, then there'll be a fee required. And, and I think it's long overdue for this because again, as you mentioned, anytime we get this type of proposal, we have to basically review the entire official plan, outline all the proposals and give them, give them written comments on that, whether it proceeds or not. So yeah, that's something we're looking at.
I just to add to that, I also think people will be more succinct with their time. They'll be a little more careful when they fire off 52 emails because we'll say this covers X amount of consultation time. And then we had again, because that's, that's sort of what's happening. Not all of them. Some of the projects are, have professional planners behind them and are very organized. And others are doing a lot of tire kicking and we have to do a lot of handholding and sort of feed them the information. And that's, those are the ones that are exhausting. So I think applicants will be more careful with their time, knowing there's a pre-consultation fee.
Okay, Counselor Smith?
Great. Thank you, Jeff. And just to reinforce the, the points that Mayor has made and maybe ask for specific questions. I've got the greatest admiration for, for Jeff and our planning team. Work very hard and do, do a great job at assisting people. But the fact of the matter is that the vast majority of our taxpayers neither afford a tax increase of 7% or thereabouts, nor do the vast majority of our taxpayers ever interface with our planning department. They've got their place and they're living a peaceful life and, and they're getting by. They've got their place, and they're living a peaceful life, and they're getting by. And developers bring forward, you know, a concept that they want to work with our planning department. In the end, for many of them, it's for their own profitability. And so, prior to approving this, you know, staffing, post-staffing increase, I'd like to see a new schedule of fees that can be implemented concurrent with the staffing increase. So that, you know, we can explain to the developers why they're paying this. And secondly, we can hold down the cost that gets passed on to the general taxpayer who barely knows what a planning department is, because they never have any reason to talk to them. And, you know, the elephant in the room here right now is a proposed budget increase of seven and a half percent, way beyond what any taxpayer is going to experience in the way of an income increase. We've got families that are going to be hard-pressed to deal with food price increases in the coming year. We've got pensioners that are essentially living on a fixed income, and we've got to find ways to avoid passing something on to them, and one way here is to, as I said, increase the fees to pay for the increased resource, not put the resorts in place and then talk about a fee increase, for the fact. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? All right, Jeff, thank you very much for presenting. Oh, councillor McCackney?
No, I'm just trying to get my head around councillor Smith's comments there. If we only paid for what we used, everything that, all the wonderful services we have, we have so many services that I don't want to have to go and use, like our doctors and our hospitals and our ambulances and our police. So, I mean, a planning department is, eventually sometime, you need a service like a planning department. It's part of our our community, it's part of the municipality, it's part of doing business. And, of course, we want to keep costs down, I understand that. But to me, we all have to use these services at one time or another, and sometimes you never use them, which is great. Thank you.
Okay, so on that note then, we'll carry on. Thanks, Jeff, and we'll bring the next department in.
Thank you.
Morning. Okay, good morning. Okay, so the next department presenting is Parks and Recreation, and Andrea will take the lead, and I will also be here to support her. Our current director of Parks and Rec is not able to be here today. So on that note, Andrea, if you want to take it away?
Sure, I will do that. So you can see from the slide here, this is just an overhead image of Headlake Park, and you can see the new welcome center. One of the arena staff took this picture with his drone, and it just shows some of the assets that we have close by. Next slide, please. So this is just an overview of some of the duties that are, take place within the Parks and Recreation Department. Obviously, the list is exhaustive, but this is just to give you a general idea. So some of the things that staff are responsible for are maintaining the parks and the public boat launches, of which we have 28 boat launches, cleaning of portable washrooms. So that's at all our outlined parks and including the ones in Headlake Park. Garbage removal in the downtown core and all parks, and as I've mentioned before in previous reports, in the summer months, take that garbage removal sometimes requires two passes in order to get everything and collect it and get it to the landfill. So we've definitely seen a large increase in that over the past few years. Winter snow removal from municipally-owned buildings, and that's something where, at this time of the year, they switch over from parks into snow removal, and they are out at 5:00 AM clearing snow, maintaining pathways, et cetera. Creating and facilitating recreation programs. Obviously, there hasn't been a whole lot of that over the past year and a half, two years, but we're anticipating more coming forward in 2022. Special events, coordination, planning and management. Again, there have, there's been a bit of coordination, but there hasn't been a whole lot of events, but that's coming. There's requests coming through daily. Assisting with grant applications and funding. The management and operation of the Halliburton Welcome Center, operations of the arena, and then maintaining municipally-owned buildings, which we have, I believe we're up to 14 now, 13 or 14 buildings, which is quite a few. So, next slide, please. So at the arena, in a normal year, where we're not dealing with COVID closures or restrictions, there's ice for 10 months of the year, usually from around July 1st until the Easter long weekend. So it's closed for maintenance and just requirements that need to be done in May and June, sometimes starting in April. This year, for 2022, the capital requests are, one of them is for the brine pump, which is a carryover from the 2021 budget of $28,500. And the other request is for a floor cleaning machine for the lower hallways and change rooms. There is a floor cleaning machine in the lobby area and for the washrooms and everything there, but you can't move it up and down the stairs, so there's a request to have one in the lower lobby, just lower hallway, just to help with the cleaning there. Some money being asked to decide for the arena reserve, so $10,000 for the Zamboni for a 10-year replacement plan, and also for the arena truck, $5,000 for a 10-year replacement plan. Next slide. So in the parks this year, or in 2022, the capital requests are for a new pickup truck. I know that that's come forward to council in some previous council meetings. The current pickup truck that Ryan uses to do his daily chores is in very rough shape. There's certain things that don't work on it anymore. It's resting out in many places. But it's something, it's his lifeline. It gets him from point A to point B on a daily basis. He does a lot of hauling of materials, especially like when they have to repair a boat launch, or they're digging things. There's different materials that he has to put into the truck and move with. And he, some days he's in Harcourt, and other days he's up in Kinesis Lake, and he's all over the place. Then there's also, just as part of the reserves for the Parks truck times two, because there are two Parks trucks, one which each of our full-time staff use. So $5,000 for each truck to be put into reserves. And then there's a carryover for that grant for Headlake and Rotary Beach of $50,000, which is a carryover from the 2021 budget. Some of the work in that grant has been accomplished. Some of it still needs to be finished in the spring of 2022. Next slide. So just to give you an idea of staffing, what we currently have, in parks, there's two full-time positions, one seasonal position, and we're proposing a summer student position, which we've had in previous years, but during COVID, we didn't have that position, but that's somebody who can assist with the garbage removal, the cleaning of the washrooms, et cetera, and the summer student position is usually like a 16-week position. In recreation, there's the Director of Parks and Recreation, Manager of Programs and Events. There's two full-time arena operators, two seasonal arena operators, one arena cleaner, that's seasonal, a screener. The screener is through the Safe Restart Funds, and that's a temporary position. And then some years, an arena student, which we're also proposing. Next slide. The big thing, the big ask that we have this year is a new staff, another new staff position for a Maintenance and Facility Coordinator, and the reason for that is it's really come to light how much time or how many calls our park staff get to try and maintain our municipally-owned buildings. A lot of them have aging infrastructure, and they're spending a lot more time trying to troubleshoot issues at these buildings or trying to deal with contractors. Repairs are becoming more complex, which requires more of their time, and even trying to coordinate with the contractors. We feel with this position, they can help, this person could help to maintain the integrity of all municipally-owned buildings, and that they'd be able to schedule the routine maintenance calls, be available to meet contractors on site. We think they should be trained as a backup for water testing. Right now, we only have one person who does the water testing. If he all of a sudden falls ill or is unable to make it, that could shut down a lot of our buildings and facilities, so just having somebody who is able to do that as a backup, and then to help in other duties in the parks and arena as needed. So that's, that's the reasoning behind that position. Next slide. So we have, some of these things, I think, were mentioned in other presentations, but there's the capital and maintenance plan budget. So in the municipal office, I know Barbara mentioned this earlier, it's to replace the carpet with flooring in the front reception area. That's a $10,000 price tag. At the medical center, to replace the front entrance doors and hardware, $20,000. Headlake Park, it was recommended by the IT department, and then the other day when Dan Collins was presenting from the OPP to have some lighting at the, in different and key areas within the park to help with security, and one of them that was mentioned was the bandshelf. So we're looking at putting some motion lights in at the bandshelf. The timbers there need to be restained. They haven't been done in many years, and they're definitely worn right now. In the arena, we're requesting that there's motion sensor lights installed in the change rooms and to change the receptacles. The feeling behind that is then, if a group's in there, or sorry, if nobody's in there, the lights go off, and we're not paying to light rooms that people aren't using. Harcourt Community Center, the water filtration system has to be replaced with a UV system, and that was a directive from the Health Unit, and that just came about a few weeks ago. West Guilford Community Center, they would like to replace the hardwood floor in 2024, and that's a $20,000 transfer to reserve. The current floor cannot be re, they can't be sanded and waxed anymore. It's at its limit. The Daisart Library, there's a carryover from the 2021 budget to replace the interlocked brick pathway. And then at the Rails and Gallery and Art Center to replace the Sofit, Fasha and Eustroph, which is a $20,000 budget item. Next slide. So as I mentioned, we didn't get to run all our recreation programs. We did have, we were really successful with yoga. It's something that we were able to do outside when restrictions allowed, and we've carried it on inside. It's a pay-per-use or a pay-per-session fee, so it's no cost to us. It works out for us. We weren't able to run ball hockey or the typical March break summer programs. We're hoping in 2022 that that's possible. I've been looking, I plan on coming forward with some information about potential programs. What we're hoping to do is the snowshoes and snowshoeing programs this winter, hopefully the weather provides. And there's things like line dancing and everything that have been going on. We've also had, not that we're facilitating, but people who are using our spaces to run recreation programs at the auditorium and paying a rental fee, so that that's been something that's increased since COVID, basically, when restrictions have allowed. We've had people paying to use our spaces to run their programs. Next slide. The Halliburton Welcome Center, I didn't put too much in here, just because I did a presentation about it the other day at Committee of the Whole. There's a request for a digital sign to be placed behind the welcome center facing York Street. That would be a $10,000 from the taxation. We're looking for a couple of round tables and umbrellas to put at the front of the welcome center for people to use, also to help define the space. So last year, there were some picnic tables there, but people would move them. They got moved into other locations in the park, but the idea was to have a couple of these round tables right in front of the welcome center, and staff could put umbrellas in and out each day. And then the staffing for the welcome center consists of one full-time recreation and tourism assistant and three to five casual tourism ambassadors, depending on the time of year and demand. And I'm open for questions.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. So Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Yeah, thanks, Andrea, for that presentation. I noticed that we've discussed in other council meetings about the rehab work needed at the rink in West Guilford, and I don't see any funding put in here. Also, can you bring me up to date on the status of the Harcourt rink and public washrooms that are out there? If there's funding needed, I don't see it in this budget. I'll move on to my next question.
So for both of those, for both Harcourt and West Guilford, there was an application made. It's an Ontario Trillium Fund application for 100% funding for new rinks, and I don't know what the washroom status at Harcourt, sorry. I'd have to look into that. I'm not sure what the status is there with washrooms. But I do know, West Guilford, we have the two portable, or not two, two permanent privies. And, yeah, so as far as the rink, so we didn't put money into the budget because we're hoping to be successful with this grant application and get 100% funding for it, that which would include lighting, replacing the pads, putting up boards, everything, and making it so it could be skating rink in the winter, and then basketball and pickleball in the other months of the year.
Thank you. Supplementary, just, you haven't quite sold me on this new position yet, Andrea. So I wonder if you could prepare a detailed job description of both the Public Works Director, your position, and this new coordinator. I just, while I look at it, you just hit the highlights, I'm sure, but some of these look like they could just be a redistribution of assignments amongst existing staff, so a bit of a hard sell here on that one. So if I could get some supplement, if council could get some supplementary information, that'd be great.
Okay, so just to clarify that you wanted it for the Director of, you said Public Works, so do you mean the Director?
No, Mark's a brat. Sorry.
That's okay.
I understand.
Because it's not, because it's not actually Andrea's job description to even present the budget. I think, I think we should punt that over to Tamara, which is really good. I just don't think it's fair for Andrea Mueller to have to explain that when that didn't, it's not.
And I was only glad to make a fair comment there, thank you.
It is, it is a good point. I have some questions too, so maybe Tamara, if you want to speak to that, or even Barbara.
Yeah, so I can speak to that. Yeah, we can provide council with some detailed information regarding the position, and we can even share some of the real-life stories that Andrea, Tamara and myself have been dealing with in the last six months. So the experience that we've been having recently has really brought into light the need for this position, and also, there's a crossover to asset management as well here. Our buildings are aging, and we tend to take a reactive approach to maintenance. So we're looking for this position here to be ahead of the curve, and, you know, plan annual maintenance, HVAC, maintenance inspections, and other activities to maintain our buildings. So, but definitely, we can provide some further detail for that. Councillor Clark?
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of what I was looking at too. I think there's some offset in terms of the cost of this position for the maintenance, you know, relative to maybe some contract stuff, but there's also the aspect of it with regard to maintaining availability of the public properties. If we have to, every time something's wrong, and we have to somehow find a contractor, and the facility is not being, you can't use it for a couple of days or a week because of that, there's a, there's a value to that, that asset not being available, so that's got to work in it as well. But my other, my other question to Andrea is, just before we got going on the Welcome Center, we had a bit of a review of Headlake Park. And it seems like all that's kind of fallen away. Is that still on the radar for doing some more work in the coming year, or are you pushing that out to 2023, or what's going on with that?
It's still on the radar. We don't have work planned in terms of the budget for that, because my understanding was, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would look for funding opportunities to carry out the plans that were part of that, the master plan, and so if funding opportunities presented themselves, then we would work to make applications that would be suitable for various work projects within the plan. And please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
Tamara?
I was just going to add to that, too, that part of the grant we have over for the Rotary Park side that also encompasses part of the Headlake Park master plan. And we're going to be looking at making some adjustments to some of the current funding we have there, where we didn't use the funds to perhaps be able to expand the sidewalk network and such on that side of the park. So while it's maybe not happening on the road, on the this side right now, the work is continuing this year on the Rotary side.
So that was a good point, Tamara, and also, just to remind council that we're very fortunate to have a talented staff in our Parks and Recreation Department. They have a lot of skills that we're able to utilize internally when it comes to construction, you know, installing a playground equipment, and so there is some cost benefit there, and while we're using more and more of our resources for While we're using more and more of our resources for these capital projects. Again, they don't have the time to stop that work and run and deal with. A 911 call at one of our facilities because the plumbing's backed up. And the other thing I'd like to stress as well is at our Welcome Center now that is requiring more resources from our staff for. Our park staff, particularly in the summertime and wintertime. Making sure the washrooms are cleaned on a very regular basis. And in the wintertime. Our park staff also shovel the snow and make sure our sidewalks are safe. Deputy Mayor Kennedy.
Yeah, just. Question for you, Barb. Is the curling and squash club, are they included in Parks and Rec? I just have a question about that. I'm not sure where that. Where that department fits.
Yeah, it does fit under the the complete Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, I just, I noticed that insurance for the curling club is an expense of 3,400. There's no income showing from the curling club that that is paid by the curling club.
Yeah, no. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, the insurance actually that came into light a few years ago where it was. Historically, the curling club covered 100% of the insurance. However, over the years, the municipality has provided 35% relief. For the club. So that is a 35% portion that the municipality is absorbing.
Thank you.
Mayor Roberts.
Thank you. So because I was in on some preliminary discussions with staff over the new position. I'm I'm well aware of. The the need and yet at the same time, in light of sort of what Counselor Smith said, we do have to be cognizant. It's our job to. You know, come up with a budget that is presentable to the public in general. And there may be some requests that have come forward today with staff that we are not able to say yes to this year. I think this department has been particularly stressed because of a six month. Staff leave right now. And so it's it's added a lot of pressures. For different people, even some like Andrea Mueller, who's not, it's not her job necessarily to present a budget. So there, you know, staff have been amazing and picked up the slack and I'm really, really pleased with everything that's going on. And I know that we have buildings that need maintaining. I know we need to make sure that we we are looking after those on a. Pre proactive way than than a reactive way. But this may be one of those situations where I don't know if the timing is right for the staff member at this point. So that'll be something that we'll have to, you know, ponder for our next draft. There's also some small things. I'm not a huge fan of the digital sign. I know we have one here. But that is a $10,000 expense. Is that necessary in 2022? Can we hold off on it? While we're already looking at a fairly high percentage increase this year. So I just, I I'm not saying it might not be necessary in the future, but. It is something that may be a want than a need that I would be willing to eliminate from the 2022 budget.
Okay, any other questions? Counselor Smith.
Thank you. And Barbara, between you and Andrea, I think gave us a a good perspective of of the level of activity in Parks and Recreation here and. You know, as you'll know, the the biggest area of increase in terms of a functional part of our of our budget is in Parks and Recreation. And you know, a huge component of that Parks and Recreation budget is the arena. And I think that, you know, we as counselors need to look hard. At, you know, arena resources, even not just here in Daisar, but think of the of the county where there's. You know, population. You know, is officially 18,000. It may be a little higher than that when we get the results of the 2021 census, but it's not going to turn into 30,000. It might be 20,000. And for there to be three arenas that are being, you know, supported by taxpayers across the county. That's a pretty high. Level of resource, you know, relative to other communities. And do we really need three arenas? Is there a way of working cooperative collaboratively with the the other municipalities? And making sure that, you know, the young kids that. Want and deserve an opportunity to to play hockey have that chance. But it doesn't always need to be in everybody's backyard. And and so. You know, I'd like to see council look at that question and consider is there an opportunity to. Work with another community and share a facility. So that, you know, we're not bearing as huge of costs as we are. You know, there's about 200 kids that play minor hockey in in Daisar. $700,000, more than 700,000, so 730, if I think if I worked out the number correctly. As the, you know, the deficit for the arena. That's not the cost, that's the deficit. When it's after we've taken the revenue earned against our costs. And that's a huge number. 200 kids, that's 3,500 per kid. So there's opportunities to potentially. Encourage those parents to to travel to a nearby community. And we can, we can work as councils to set that up, make those kind of arrangements. Rather than, you know, bearing such a significant cost. Per child and. And so, you know, it's not going to result in the immediate closure of the arena, but it does need to be something that I think we as council are looking at. And and really considering what options are out there. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy.
I guess I'll have to be fundamentally in disagreement with you, Counselor Smith. Having three arenas in a county the size of Prince Edward Island is not. Too much of a ask and arenas used for a lot more than just the 200 kids. And I now have some grandkids that are using a couple of facilities. So I I think it's a, I think we need to look for efficiencies. I agree with you on that. And is there ways to increase some revenues possibly? But I think, as you said earlier, a lot of our families are already struggling just to put food on the table. I don't think we can go back to the well and ask our hockey players, families maybe to contribute much more. Towards it. So it's a cost that I as a taxpayer, I'm willing to to absorb. As long as the department continues to look for efficiencies, as I believe they are doing. Thank you.
Council McKechnie.
Yeah, I agree with Deputy Mayor Kennedy there. The one thing we got to understand here is in one side of our mouth, we're talking about all the growth we're going to have here. And then we got somebody wanting to shut down some of our arenas or and. Other things that that maybe he doesn't use or certain people don't use. There's a lot of things that we have. In our that their taxpayers pay for that I don't use, but I know how important they are to have a community. So I mean. In the next year, two years, we're going to have a lot of families moving up here. We better have those arenas. I I'd like to see us get ready to put some money into fixing up some of the other arenas. Our arena is in great shape as far as I'm concerned. And we we should be ready for it. So I I there's a lot of families, like I say, are going to be moving up here. We all know that. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further, oh, Mayor Roberts.
Thanks. I know it's different from me putting my hand up, but I'm being respectful of the what I said the process would be. So I'm not just jumping in. You know, I understand, I sort of agree with Deputy Mayor Kennedy in that. You know, we have geography wise, a very large municipality or county. So and municipality, actually. So having an arena here in town. You know, it's still quite a distance. The other thing is if our facility was. Empty half the time, but it's not. So maybe Andrea Mueller, you could just spend a minute and or a second, whatever, just explain. How busy, not just on the ice surface, upstairs, downstairs, all the things that happen besides hockey. That happened at the arena and how how what's the schedule like at our arena? And how could we share an arena if our schedule is that busy?
Sure. So this year, we're still, this year it's changed a bit because for the past two years, we were the only facility open in all of the county. Some people weren't able to get ice time just because. We were, we were strapped with that. This year, in the auditorium, for example, we have some recreation like yoga classes and things taking place. Couple days a week in the morning, there's line dancing in the evenings every, other than Friday nights, it's booked every night for. For for activities and some days it starts at 4:00, 4:00 PM and it goes until. 9, 10 o'clock at night. The weekends, the auditorium is generally. Not used as much and that's something that we can promote more use of. There are birthday parties. But again, those are just starting to start back up again because COVID restrictions before would not allow. So we we are getting some people inquiring and booking. The auditorium and ice combined. As far as user groups, so one thing I've noticed is. We have online registration for our public skating and adult only skating and the adult only skating and the public skating in the middle of the week have. Had a huge surge in people attending. In the past, it used to be one or two people. It seems now sometimes we're full and and that's something. I think people are getting. They're 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 seeing it more like they see it when they go on, they see it in our calendar, they see it on the sign. People are becoming more aware of that. We have many men's groups or that use the ice, Mondays, Wednesdays. It's it's used throughout the week with various groups. And then in the evening, quite often it's minor hockey, but then there's other groups piggybacking on on that in the evening. There's availability for rentals during the day on certain days of the week. But like we've even had members of the Halliburton Huskies book first thing in the morning so they can get on and do some extra practicing because. The Menden, they can't get the ice time at the Menden Arena or it just doesn't, they're close, they go to high school here. So it's closer to to book ice in our area than. This year, we don't have, normally it would be more full of the schedule too, because we'd have two high school. Hockey teams using the ice as well, plus the school groups that book in, but. They haven't been, they they weren't allowed to have their hockey teams this year because of COVID restrictions. So so there's things where we're not at full. We're not at our regular operations yet, but we we're moving in that direction again and trying to put opportunities out there so people are aware of what rentals are available and and. Trying to use up the space more and and it's out there. Somebody in the community wants to book the auditorium or the ice surface for. For whatever type of programming, it's available.
And also the fact that we do have some good summer rental revenue as well for the ice. Not only do we have the hockey. School, but we've got other patrons that use the ice surface as well. Okay, so if there's no further questions, Andrea, thank you very much for your help and thank you. For all you've done within the Parks and Recs. On an ongoing basis, especially over the last few months when we've all had to kind of recalibrate and. I know I met with the staff last week and a lot of good positive feedback. We. Were very fortunate to have a really good group of people operating our arena. They're very passionate about what they do. And the best compliment they get is from the patrons themselves. Thanks. Okay, I guess we'll move on to the next presentation and that will be our. Waste disposal at the landfills. Okay, you all set, John?
I am, yes.
Okay, so I'll share the screen.
Hi, everyone.
Okay. Take it away.
All right. First off, admittedly, 2021 was definitely a year of change for Daisar's waste management programs. We had a new waste management bylaw coming to effect. New landfill hours and new waste management disposal fees. In 2022, we'll see some further enhancements, including all landfill attendants becoming employees of Daisart instead of the current mix of Daisar employees. And employees of a contracting company. And we will be starting a new two year garbage recycling and construction demolition hauling and processing agreement. Admittedly, it's the same vendors we've had in 2020 and 2021. Next slide, please. For 2022, the waste management revenue is projected at. This includes the sales of landfill cards, composters, digesters, and the new new food cycler pilot project. Funding from provincial organizations and producer responsibility organizations and the municipal modernization fund. The sale of scrap metal collected at all five of our landfill sites. And disposal fees from site users and pre-approved credit accounts. Next slide. For 2022, the waste management expenses is projected at $2,474,564. This is made up of wages, benefits and professional development, hauling and processing of recycling, garbage and construction and demolition waste. Landfilling and also household hazardous waste days. Environmental monitoring, reporting and studies, and then other operational expenses, including equipment, operations and rentals. Utilities, information technology and promotion and education expenses. And next slide. And then for capital, we'll be allocating an additional $20,000 into our reserve for scales. We'll now have $100,000 in that reserve fund. For Kinesis Lake landfill, we've allocated $33,000. To purchase a portion of the adjacent property for the completion of the contaminant attenuation zone. Which would include the legal fees, realty fees, et cetera. And that's a requirement from Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks. And at West Guilford landfill, this is kind of the, it's a biggie, but we've allocated $129,000 to. One remedy the legacy fill beyond limit. That's happened at that site. And then also to reconfigure the site for a full waste transfer, which would include regrading the slope at the back of the site. The final cover and also reconfiguring the drop off areas. For that second component, we have applied to the Ontario Municipal Modernization Program, the Intake Three, to fund 75% of this project. So that 129,000 is kind of the worst case scenario. There's potential that it capital expenditure would be less if that funding application is successful. All right, next slide. And any questions?
Okay, thank you, John. So we'll open the floor up to questions for John. Counselor Smith.
Yep, thank you. So. John, I was, when I was going through the detailed accounts, I was trying to. Assess exactly. How much is in the budget for the contract with Mid-Ontario? And there's a line item that's called Contract Services Government. Which I didn't think would actually be the Mid-Ontario line item, but it appears to be about the dollars that I would expect to be paid to them. So. Maybe there's a good reason why we call it Contract Services Government and that's what it is. But I wanted to confirm that first.
And that is correct. So that account is because they have a contract with us as government. The amount for Mid-Ontario is budgeted at $1,146,000. In that, in that same account for some of the other sites, there will be landfilling costs, for example, at West Bay landfill. But I do, I did, the breakout is about 1.146.
Thank you for that. And and again, in the details, there was quite a dramatic increase at the Halliburton landfill site. In terms of the of the overall costs for that facility compared to what taking place at the other location. Could you give me an explanation for that?
For an increase at Halliburton landfill, I suspect it would have to be from the construction demolition waste that is just, that site is. Kind of becoming inundated. And then also we have the two full time employees that will be joining the complement there. They were previously contract workers. So you'll see it's kind of a shift from the two contract workers to now to a full time and two contract workers to being three full time staff at that site. And Barbara.
That was supposed to save us money. So presumably. The contract services would have been allocated to Halliburton landfill site and now the employee salaries are located or are being charged to the Halliburton landfill site, but at a lower cost, actually, right?
Yeah.
So if I may just add on those contract services consulting is. We've also got $60,000 in that line item for the waste composition study, the four season waste composition study. And we've also earmarked municipal modernization funding for that. So the net impact on the levy is zero.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McKechnie.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah, uh I'd like to see us add fifteen thousand dollars more to the budget um for um Harcourt um West Bay and Kinesis, add five more hours open time for our taxpayers. Um roughly works out to be fifteen thousand dollars, I've done the math. And uh that we um sure ha- have a big bill there running our landfill sites, but I think it's uh important that uh we accommodate our um our our taxpayers. And uh I I I think it would be um really great if we did that, so thank you.
Counselor Donaldson?
Yeah, that was what I was going to say too. Uh uh definitely the Harcourt residents and I, Wes Guilford, definitely want their hours back and um they've been quite vocal about it. And uh it would be really good if that could go back in there.
Okay, thank you. Uh any other questions? Okay, so I think that wraps up our waste disposal.
Yeah, just for, just for a point of process. So when a counselor brings something forward uh li- like the suggestion that Counselor McKechnie just made, what I think we'll do today is the overall budget uh overview. And then at our next budget meeting, we can sort of debate those things. So it looks like silence on the screen, but it's not. It's now I'm gonna have time to process that, and you can sort of say, you know, if if this goes in, this happens, and we can take, so that detail is now what we'd say on the table, and we'll discuss it at an, at a the next budget meeting. Is that fair?
Sorry.
Keeping notes. You've been keeping notes. Otherwise, counselors and even people viewing say, well, they talked about that, nobody said anything. I just wanted to talk about process.
Yeah, no, I've been logging some of the requests here and I will uh uh summarize them for the next uh budget meeting.
Exactly. So they're just not debating now. I I do, so are there any other questions for John? Maury?
Sorry, I have a question about the request. Was it for five more hours per site for Kinesis, West Bay, and Harcourt? Were those the th- the three?
Yes, yes, Maury.
I just wanna make sure that I understood. Okay, thank you.
And then John can, I know you did your math well, but John can co- confirm the math. I don't know the math. The, I I see that we've already brought Rob on the screen, but I'm gonna look to uh everybody. We have um two sections left to go, but they're the meteor, mediest ones of all, which is uh you know, our um the the sanitary sewer. Now that actually, so much of that is contracted out, might not take that long, and then transportation. So I'm gonna look to the uh screen and see if people would like to take a lunch break now, or do the sanitary sewer and then take a lunch break. So hands up for lunch break now. I don't see any. Oh, I see one. Hands up to do sewer now, to do the sewer, continuous sewers. Okay, so we'll continue to do this section, and then we'll take our lunch break and um and and be ready, Rob, after that. Okay.
Okay. Take it away, Rob.
Uh good afternoon, um Madam Mayor, members of council. Um thank you, John Watson, for that last presentation. You've been a big asset to this this process for sure, this year in particular. Now that he's put all those pictures into his presentation, I'm sorry that I do not have the same level of detail in my presentation. Um I do have some charts, but mostly numbers, and it's very, very dry stuff. So we have the next slide, please, Barbara. So here's just an annual breakdown of the revenues for the wastewater treatment plant. You can see there's some peaks and valleys throughout the last uh five years. Uh next slide, please. There'd be a similar chart for the expenses, which leads us into the next slide, Barbara, if you could. The this slide here is basically telling us that the user fees are not covering the operating and capital expenses, which Barbara has touched on with the increase, the eight-point-one percent increase on the user fees for the sewer system. Uh can we see the next slide, please, for annual expenses? So the system operation obviously is the big one. This is our contract services with Clearford A S I. It also involves uh the the haulage of the sludge by shepherds and application in their their lagoons and their fields. You know, from there, we got the the hydro maintenance insurance, capital, and lagoon cost as well. But certainly by and large, the the operating for Clearford A S I is the big ticket there. Uh next one, please, Barbara. So this gives you a snapshot of the historical user fees. Um there was an increase a couple of years ago. You'll see that little, that little blip in twenty nineteen. If we could have the next slide, please, Barbara, it will show you the proposed user fees as presented in the Asset Management Plan from earlier this year. It is quite a dramatic jump, um certainly through twenty thirty-one. Uh again, it is a user-paid system, and the fees are meant to cover the operating and replacement costs of the asset. Uh can we have the next one, Barbara, just to to show you the uh a little more dramatic um illustration here of what's gonna happen the last five years versus the next five years if we move ahead with the proposed increases. So the last five years, you know, on on average, we're about eight hundred ninety-one thousand dollars a year, and the next five years will jump up to over one point one million. So any questions or comments on that before we move ahead to the capital and maintenance breakdowns?
Mayor Roberts?
Yeah, I'm gonna chime in. This is based on the number of users we have today. So as an example, we uh and Barbara, maybe you can help me out here, how many? When we're doing a budget, we have to project, we're gonna have so many new users on in the next year. We have no projects that ho- have come to a zoning approval, have come to a site plan approval, and we know that they're gonna be shoveled in the ground in twenty twenty-two. As we talked about in planning, we have lots in the works, but nothing actually a go. If, as an example, we got eighty new unit users in one year to pay a capital connection plus those user fees, this number will change. So w- we need more users on our system. We need more housing, but that will also offset the system. So Barbara, I don't know if you wanna speak to that at all.
Yes, so um definitely, uh you know, there is capacity on the system to take new users on. Um however, uh looking at the uh fixed costs uh to run the um system, um the more users we get, then we're able to cover um that through uh I guess a smoother increase on the user fee. But uh without that growth and even the capital connections, uh the system is stressed. Um you know, any sort of future capital connections need to stay with the system. Um you know, I I know from time to time, we have groups that ask for relief of that. Um definitely not recommended uh um to to uh give that revenue away. Um but yeah, and uh you know, we don't have consistent growth year over year. We may um you know, we've had some notable projects in the past, like the Silver Beach Project, where we knew we were gonna get connections year over year. Uh that project is now done. This budget here, this year, is uh budgeting for two capital connections. We have, and and that's just um, we haven't really got any specific projects earmarked, but we figure, you know, just based on history, that there would be two that would come up throughout the course of the year. Um and the budget that we're presenting for the sewer system right now um considers the eight-point-one percent increase on the E R U. If we do not implement that increase, um then the system is going to be in a deficit of about thirty thousand dollars this year in twenty twenty-two. So with the increase, we're saying it's, we're gonna create a surplus of roughly thirty-five thousand dollars. So we're heading in the right direction uh for future maintenance of the system and capital projects. So.
But I just wanna point out, the the long-term projection, um even in looking at twenty twenty-six was based on the numbers that we have. However, if, you know, if we had a year where we had forty connection, a large facility, a large apartment complex or something, student residence, which we know is is uh still going forward, although I, you know, don't see that happening in twenty twenty-two, but it could easily be in the twenty twenty-three uh budget. That will, that will really help. So.
Well, and and definitely, uh so when we take these uh, when these huge projects connect to the system and that capital uh portion for the connection, um you know, it counsel um should really give some good consideration to that. And and perhaps the decision may be that type of revenue goes right into a capital reserve fund for future replacement um of the system. And then you also benefit from the user, the operating fee, which is the user fee, and that will help to mitigate the fixed cost to run the system and normalize the actual user fee increase. So you know, this year, we're saying eight point one. If we get hypothetically a hundred users on the system within the course of the year, um that that can come down next year, because this plan here is saying eight-point-one percent in the each of the next ten years. So uh it it's it's a math game and and without, um you know, we we can calibrate with the peaks and valleys on the user fee. Does that answer the question, Mayor Roberts?
Well, it was more of a comment that I wanted to make, that uh Rob has to project numbers at what we have today, particularly on the user fees, not the capital connection. However, that is why we need, well, we need the growth for housing. We need play people to have a place to live. Uh you know, and I I do see the student residence being one particular that that will go forward probably first, but you just don't know. But the, having more users on a system, which we have capacity for right now without doing anything at the plant, um that has been a concern of people with the public, that we don't have capacity. We do. And if I was living on the sewer system, I would want to encourage more users to be on it so that my fee doesn't go up eight-point-one percent year over year. Uh that that's very significant. Certainly in twenty twenty-two, we need to do that. Um but you never know, and by twenty twenty-three, we may be able to uh be more level with our increases.
Yeah, and this here just demonstrates the, you know, what the numbers would look like if you um were to consider the recommendation in the Asset Management Plan, which was eight-point-one percent in each year of the next ten years.
Barbara, the um ones like garden suites or the or the student residences, is is that metered? Uh in in terms of how that comes on the system, or are they looked at as as individual units coming on the system?
Uh that is based on E R U.
So, yeah, um you know, so it'll like they're like a a metered thing, so there's not.
Yeah, they're charged. I I believe the units may be prorated and and so then, you know, it may be hypothetically, um you know, X number of units rated at fifty percent of the E R U rate, and that's just the example. I don't know what the actual number is, but they are uh rated based on E R U, so they don't give us a meter reading, and there's fluctuation based on their actual usage. Um that's really to a handful of customers there.
Yeah, um in in term, as as an individual homeowner who's connected to the the system, you know, the um you know, I think it's going from six hundred and thirty-eight to six forty, you know, it's not big money. And it's, and and it really, it is very inexpensive compared to having so, having to maintain a subject system and and um have a subject system service, so it's, you know, the the dollar figures are not at a whack um in terms of those of us who are on the system. So I I can't see a big to-do on it.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Send it back over to you, Rob.
Uh can I have the next screen, please, Barbara? So as far as capital goes this year, we're proposing only one item, and that is to upgrade three uh P L Cs at the new pump stations. That would be pump station uh four, five, and six, which basically is along Counter Road twenty-one. Uh one being at Halbiom, one being at Whispering Pines, and one being down by Cleese on the Rocks. So the P L Cs uh basically run each pump station, and these are original electronic devices from when the system was put in in the late nineties. So ultimately, we're looking at replacing all eight. Um but they are quite pricey. We're proposing three because that's what they can do in one day. So instead of having them come up for one day just to do one P L C, didn't make much sense in our eyes. So for one day, if you can do three, let's do three. Um next year, we'll do three more, the following year. Excuse me, we'll do two. Um so this is certainly, this is not an immediate, immediate requirement. So council does have some discretion here. Um we're looking at it from a standpoint that they're over twenty years old. They are electronic devices, and they are gonna need replacing at one at some point. We're not proposing to do them all in one year because that would be, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, basically. But we think it's something we should chip away at. If we wanna do less than three, um they can do that. It would break down the uh the overall cost, but the unit cost would actually increase because they are allowed, they are able to do three per day. Can I have the next slide, please? So the maintenance breakdown to to piggyback on that, the annual flushing and C C T V, that's an annual program we've been, we've been doing forever. Basically, we go through our entire system about every seven years with C C T V to look for for maintenance issues. Um refurb three pumps, that's uh, that's a pretty standard um asked year over year. Sometimes we go through two, sometimes it's four. Um just depends on the pump itself. The replacing ball valves, I believe we are nearing the end of that program. It's been going on for several several years now. Um once that program is ended, we should be good for about twelve to fifteen years before we gotta go back through and and do that that uh upgrade again. Order control is, that's just an annual thing, that's year over year. Replacing auto dialers is new. Um we have two auto dialers at the new plant. Again, they're original electronic pieces of equipment. One of the auto dialers monitors the the new system, the new S P S's. If they signal a fault or an error of some sort, they will dial out and they will call in Clearford A S I to investigate it. The second auto dialer looks after the old system. So the old system does not have P L Cs in their pump stations. They simply have uh uh high float alarms. So basically, they tell you there's something wrong. They won't tell you what it is. So it will monitor the old S P S systems and the main plant for errors and call Clearford at that point. Um again, we have two of them. They both look after different areas, but they are original electronic equipment. Um we're not saying it's imminent failure, but it's something we might wanna get ahead of, given it does give our contractors that much advanced notice of a potential issue at the plant itself. Um last but not least is to replace the uh mixed liquor and suspended solids uh dissolved oxygen sensors. Um basically, that is in the E C A. It's it's part of the uh operating requirement of the camp, of the plant. Right now, they are taking samples manually and doing it that way. This is just something to keep us in compliance with the ministry. Uh I believe that is it. Um are there any further questions on the treatment plant?
Counselor Smith?
Yep, thank you. And thanks, Rob, for the explanations there. Uh just one uh uh question. We've been depending on Clearford to uh provide advice, recommendation to us for quite some time. When was the last time that we uh did some sort of uh competitive tendering or uh support of the system?
Uh I don't have the answer to that, Counselor. It was before I was here, so um so it's been been a while, obviously.
Been several years. Um if you talk to others about uh, you know, uh that might have done that and and what sort of results they had, is that, is that something that you know, we we did a recent one with uh, you know, our our waste processor and hauler, Mid-Ontario. And uh, you know, they had proposed an increase of uh uh four and a half percent or something like that, as I recall, and uh and we went to a competitive tender, and suddenly the price came down. Uh it's actually a reduction as opposed to that size of increase. And uh um you know, which just demonstrates again, as you'd always expect, the the value of a competitive bidding process. And uh I don't know if that applies the same to uh to this, but uh you know, kind of checking the marketplace every now and again is uh is often a worthwhile thing.
Yeah, I'm I'm just thinking, in instead of Rob answering that question, and I could just sort of see Tamara through, I I think maybe Tamara can answer that slightly better. Not to take away, Rob, if you wanna add to it after, but I I'd like I'm just thinking, in instead of Rob answering that question, I could just sort of see Tamara through, I I think maybe Tamara can answer that slightly better, not to take away, Rob, if you want to add to it after, but I I'd like to see Tamara's or hear Tamara's comments on that.
Well, as Rob noted, it hasn't been done since either of us have been here, but I think it's a little different than a mid Ontario and that all the staff that manage the plant live locally and have, since that contract was in place. There are, of course, other options, we know other townships use other places, but there's also issues, I believe in Rock and. Speak to this with having to change out equipment to meet requirements of other companies because of different technologies used and so forth, that perhaps Rob can speak to that.
Yeah, I don't know the specifics on that, Tamara, I just, I do know it was probably two or three years ago that one of the neighboring municipalities went through this. And from what I gather, there wasn't a whole lot of interest from the open marketplace based on. The the vendor that was in there now and the infrastructure they had in place, it was my understanding that it would have cost the the new vendor. Basically, to take a loss for several years to upgrade the equipment and replace it with their own. That's it's a very general generality, I don't know specifics of it.
Okay, so if there's no further questions, Council McKechnie?
Yeah, this hasn't got anything to do with money, Rob, but in the past few weeks, months, there's been a lot of conversation about the wallings. If there was some development in there, I've heard talking about maybe the odors would get be be more severe. If if there was more people hooked up to the line there, would that help the the system produce the odor like it? The few times it happens, I mean, I drive by there a lot, I've never really smelled it, but I'm only going by the people that live right there.
Yeah, increased flows helps the odor throughout the collection system, it won't really impact at the plant. You know, you're going to have from time to time some orders there as they're drawing out sledge. Which I believe probably three years ago, we had a few complaints on, but I haven't heard anything personally in the last couple of years on odor complaints at the plant.
Yeah, like I say, I haven't heard myself, I just feel the letters and comments we've heard and I'm just curious to that. Because I I remember you saying that years ago or somebody did that more usage would decrease the the odor, so.
Yeah, generally at the far end of the new system is where we historically had issues, right at the the very beginning of the line, only because it was low flow. And that's why we now have a submerged pump there at Silver Beach, just to increase the flows and get the sewage going through.
Thanks very much.
Okay, so that concludes the sewage system. I guess at this point, Mayor Roberts, you were indicating we'll take a break.
I think we should, I need to stretch my arm and my legs and maybe get a bite to eat, so. A half an hour is very quick, it's hard for staff to get lunch, would would. Would forty minutes be okay, we'd meet at ten after one? I think it's just a little bit more time, so, okay, we'll go into recess and we'll meet at one ten.
Okay.
Thank you. Just let me know when it's back, yeah, okay, let me know when it's back, we're back. So hope everybody had a nice little lunch break and we saved the best for last, the biggest for last, the. Whatever, we saved Rob for last, so. Rob's already on screen, so between Barb and Rob, go ahead.
Okay, so we'll share the screen. And you're on deck, Rob.
Uh, thank you, Barbara, can we move ahead to the next slide, please? Uh, so let's just give you a bit of historical year over year in our department. Next slide, please. So notable contributions to the reserve, we got some big dollars going into reserve now, that is as a result of the asset management plan. So that is partially. The reason for the, I think we're up around seven, over seven percent increase in my department, and this is a big part of that. Uh, next slide, please. So the revenue, Barbara touched on this and in her slides, so we got federal gas tax, OCIF, which that number will be modified now to reflect the. Or potentially reflect the number that Barbara was speaking about earlier. The county maintenance of thirty thousand, that is strictly for winter maintenance on the harbor and road. So we have annual maintenance agreements on that. And then we got thirteen thousand dollars for permits and ten thousand dollars for Fowler Construction Sand Recovery. From there, two trucks that run out of our yard for Highway one eighteen. Uh, next slide, please. So capital purchases, what we're proposing, so two hundred ninety one thousand for a tandem truck, that's been pre-approved, it's been ordered. Hopefully it's here in the spring, more likely it's going to be in the fall. A pickup truck, so that's a carryover from last year. We had some manufacturing issues, so the line, the plant is running, but I'm told that they're only running retail right now, they're not running the commercial line. So we're hoping to see that truck from twenty 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 one carry over to quarter one of twenty twenty two. A small tractor here, so that's going to replace a Kubota tractor that we have, it is a two thousand two tractor, so it's it's approaching twenty years old. It used to be the primary snowplow for our sidewalks, it is now the backup for our sidewalks. It's used to load our sidewalk plow, but it's also used to load materials on the smaller trucks in the summer months. So it's it's a it's a notable expense of seventy thousand dollars, but it's good for about twenty years, once it's here. We feel it is important to keep our backup sidewalk plow in good shape as well. Uh, moving on, sixty five thousand for forward facing cameras, that was discussed at an earlier meeting. So that's going to be funded from the modernization funding as well as fifty five thousand for automated automated flagger system. So that has not been sourced yet, we're in in talks with surrounding municipalities to see how much interest there is on that for a joint tender. Last but not least, forty five thousand dollars for a half ton pickup, that would be replacing a twenty seventeen pickup that we have. That won't be surplus, but it will be moved over to the environmental department. And their older pickup would be declared surplus at that point, so it's just kind of moving vehicles around. Any questions on capital purchases? Okay, uh, next one, please, Barbara. I'm just going to go through some maintenance items here, there there's nothing really out of whack necessarily, it's just goes to show that basically everything we do costs money. And just to show you where the money actually goes. Excuse me. So in the connecting link, we have five thousand dollars put in there for another connecting links application that hopefully we'll hear from. Early twenty twenty two for stormwater CCTV inspection. Contracted services, so that's our winter maintenance agreements with the both the county and Fowler Construction for the connecting link going through town and a portion of the line painting going through town. Next, please, Barbara. So roads construction, this is going to be a very detailed discussion, I'm sure, Madam Mayor, if it pleases you and and the group. I'd like to bring this forward to the next council meeting at the end of the month. So we can discuss the the possible extension with Miller paving and what we are proposing for next year.
I think that's very timely and we talked about not getting bogged down in this high level first draft budget with listing the roads now, but with the opportunity to. Continue an agreement with Miller, the timing is right, we do meet again in on December twenty. Whatever that is, first, I'm sorry, it's the Tuesday. So yes, I think that's a a great idea and we can have a more fulsome discussion now, this is the funding commitment which started at one point five million with three percent increase year over year. This is sort of the the target amount for construction that we all all agreed on.
Next one, please, Barbara. So a big number in this one, a hundred thousand dollars, we're proposing for a hydraulic survey of the Redstone Brook and detailed design of the Redstone Brook Bridge. So we have two bridges crossing this water course, one on Green Lake Road being the Redstone Brook Bridge and one on Berry Line being Berry's Bridge. Back in, I believe it was twenty thirteen when we had one of our flooding events, the water was pushing on the bridge deck of Berry's Bridge. And there was, it was coming up to the deck on Green Lake Road as well. Both of these bridges are below fifty from a BCI standpoint, one's at forty six, one's at forty four. So sooner than later, we're going to have to look at rehabilitation or replacement of these bridges. So the hundred thousand dollars would basically assess the whole water course and do a detailed design, including geotechnical and new design of the Redstone Brook Bridge. It is my anticipation that we're going to have to raise the bridge a certain amount, I don't know what that is, we're going to have to leave that up to the engineers to figure out. Notable about this hundred thousand dollars is it is funded through taxation, we're not drawing that from the reserve. So if if we're looking for savings down the road, then this may be something you may want to reduce the scope on, cut altogether or just cut it down and put it into reserve for future works. The next line is the transfer to the bridge reserve, and again, that's through the asset management plan. Structural culvert, so this is a relatively new account for us, it just came into play last year, I believe. We don't have any capital works on structural culverts, but we are going to place forty seven thousand dollars in the reserve for future replacement. Next, please, Barbara. Sidewalks, so we have the annual inspections, we have that done by others under Oreg two thirty nine. And capital works, we have more carryover again this year being the York Street Highland Street intersection. Basically to sub in for the stairs that were removed there, as well as the Garden Retirement Extension from Park Street all the way around to Sunnyside to Garden Retirement. Next, please, Barbara. Bridge and culvert maintenance, again, thirty thousand dollars, I think that's pretty static year over year, that's just for the culvert sand materials that go with culvert replacement. Next, Barbara. Washouts, another shot in the dark, you can see the previous years, it's kind of all over the map, we're going to go in at one seventy six plus a forty thousand dollar transfer to the reserve this year. Say my crystal ball doesn't work, so I'm not sure what we're going to be into. Next one, please, Barbara. Brushing and tree removal, this was a a topic of discussion throughout the summer as well, so we are putting in another hundred and forty two thousand dollars. That will include twenty five to thirty kilometers of of mechanical brushing. We're actually assessing the roads now to bring forward a list before we go to tender on that. Next one, Barbara. Catch basins, so contract services at twenty two thousand dollars. That's when we hire somebody to come in and clean our catch basins once a year, it also includes the oil grid separator maintenance, which is a very pricey piece of infrastructure. We now have two of them and we have one of the roads garage as well. The one on York Street in particular, it doesn't get serviced every year, it gets inspected every year. But when we need to service it, it's upwards of ten thousand dollars to do that, so I just want council to be aware that, you know, it's all very good stuff, good infrastructure to have in place, but we do have to maintain it. And usually about every two to three years, we have to have it serviced to the cost of nine or ten thousand dollars. And again, a transfer to reserve of fifty five thousand. Uh, summer patrol, it costs us money to drive around and patrol these roads, so this keeps us in compliance with Oreg two thirty nine oh two, about forty eight thousand dollars annually. Uh, next one, please. Sweeping sixteen thousand dollars, so this is for the the bristles that we do put on the the mechanical brooms that we have, the open brooms. It also includes some contracted services. This one is, this one fluctuates from time to time as well, depending on what kind of winter we've had, if we put out a lot of sand, we got to do a lot of sweeping, so. I think we came in at or below budget this year, so we'll see what happens in twenty twenty two. Uh, dust layer, again, shot in the dark, depends what we get for weather. Presumably, once these roads, we do have a list of roads that will be upgraded back to surface treatment over the next period of time, so. If we're treating less kilometers of rough gravel roads, then those costs should come down marginally. Gravel resurfacing, so this one kind of fluctuated a little bit, it used to be quite a bit higher. I think it was about the same price last year, but we didn't spend all of it, basically now that we've added gravel roads to our capital works. It's really bringing this number down, so our our forces aren't doing as much resurfacing on their own of gravel roads, we're basically maintaining what we have. But it's good to have that that money there for kind of the offshoots that get missed in the capital works. Excuse me, so now the big ones, snow plowing and sanding will be next. So you can see we've been quite a bit under our budgeted amounts the last couple of years, I fully anticipate we'll have significant savings in twenty twenty one as well. But we're not increasing the budget year over year, because even though we're not spending the money, we still need that money to go into the reserve to replace the equipment. It's it's kind of an artificial number, because, yeah, we haven't spent very much money in snow plowing and sanding for that matter. But the trucks aren't rolling, they're not generating their own revenue, they're not paying for their own replacement, so once we get a final number on that. Staff will be recommending that we take some of that, some of that surplus and put it into the development reserve for equipment replacement. I think Barbara touched on that one at the start as well. Yeah, same thing, Barbara, could we move ahead? Winter patrol, again, this is more or less on weekend patrols to keep us in compliance with Oreg two thirty nine oh two. Next, Barbara. Health and safety signs and guide rail, so we went in a little high again this year, the intent last year was to replace a bunch of the guideposts around the municipality. That quite honestly haven't been replaced since I've been here, so there's lots of them, it was just. The, we we didn't have time to do it, quite honestly, so we're going to throw it back in again this year and take our best shot at doing it this year. So new items for two for twenty twenty two. So at Personnel Committee, we have discussed a mechanics assistant position, which is a unionized position out at the roads garage. We don't have a detailed job description at this point, this is very much preliminary conversations. And from my perspective, it it has two solutions for issues that we have. Number one, if you look back at the the cost of some of this equipment, we're losing about half, half a person per day all year. Of our equipment operators to do some sort of maintenance on these vehicles. Maintenance that when they're working on a vehicle, they're not working out on the road, they're not digging a ditch, they're not patching potholes, anything that that effect. The second part is when we have more than one person off, our mechanic becomes a spare plow driver. So now we're paying a mechanic to go plow snow throughout the week and doesn't give him an opportunity to be working on equipment. So by having this new position, my intent is to have this new person provide the help they need to mechanic when he's at the shop. It takes care of the working alone issue that could be an issue at a roads garage with that heavy equipment. And should we be down more than one person throughout the week, this mechanic's assistant would become the spare driver and the mechanic would stay in the shop and continue on doing what he's doing. He does have a pretty heavy workload, he looks after about thirty pieces of equipment in our department. About half of that require annual inspections and we can't do annual inspections through the winter because it's being utilized for winter maintenance. So basically, he needs to do annual inspections on about fifteen pieces of equipment from April to October, so his summer is pretty well booked. So in my view, instead of having an equipment operator in there doing the heavy lifting, helping them out, we could have a mechanic's assistant in there to help him when needed, when he's not needed out in the shop. He would be ordering the stock, keeping track of the stock, that kind of thing. Looking after the yard and should we need the help out on the road, he would be helping out on the road. The, depending how we proceed with this, there is a potential there for an apprenticeship program to aid in succession planning. Our our mechanic's not going to be here forever, he's, he has indicated, he's he's not leaving right away, but he's not going to be, he's not going to be here for ten years either. So this gives us a chance to move something, move something ahead, get it in place and potentially promote from from within. We'll just have to see, once we get the job description done, if we have any interest from within. You know, we can kind of approach it a little differently than if we do an outside posting. And how we propose to fund this would be a split between the equipment rentals. And how we propose to fund this would be a split between the equipment rentals and the maintenance budget, because the position very well will be split between the, the, the two sides. Um, is there any comment on that before I move ahead to the next one?
We're good.
Uh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Kennedy.
Oh.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. Um, I had a chance to attend the Labor Relations Committee meeting in November and uh this topic came up. And uh mechanic was able to sort of fill me in on some of the other complications and, and uh issues that, that he runs into. Um, basically, when he's out to do a service call, he loses on an average of numbers that he gave me, three to four hours per call. And basically, uh, around a hundred and sixty hours so far in twenty twenty-one, that was in November. So that's lost time in the shop for him. It's lost time. Um, the mechanic's assistant could be helping, either doing the, the service call, depending on what it was, or continuing to work on in the garage. So I do support this program at this time. And um, I just wanted to say that, that uh it's, it's something that's needed and also for the safety of, we have a mechanic working there on very heavy uh pieces of equipment, tires and whatever, and lots of times he's the only person in the shop if everybody else is out working, so there is a safety concern as well, uh, working alone in that, in that atmosphere. So I just, I just wanna make those comments. Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Um, as well, um, touch on the fact you said that it could be um potential for an apprentice program. As we know, staff are uh, it's very hard to find staff up here, it's hard for people to move up here, but if, so if someone isn't a fully licensed mechanic, uh, maybe they have some education, like there, there's quite a process to becoming a licensed mechanic. But can you explain a little bit more about how, eh, when we, if we agree with this job and we go out and look and where this, how the apprenticeship program could fit in?
Yeah, um, say as we go through the process, i- it depends how much interest we have from within, quite honestly. Um, because if there's no interest from within to grow into that role and we go to an external posting, we're gonna ask for certain qualifications. Um, our mechanic right now has, has two tickets. He has a three-ten S and a three-ten T, which is the small stuff and the big stuff. If we have uh interest from within that wants to grow with municipality and grow into that role, our mechanic has stated he would be willing to mentor this person and give them the, the hours towards the, uh, towards the license. Which at first I was a little I was a little hesitant on, quite honestly, because I had in my mind that he literally would be looking over, over his shoulder the entire time to make sure he's doing everything all right. And I've since been informed that that's not really how it works, um, that it's not gonna be a, a huge burden on the mechanic to take this, this person under their wing and he is willing to do it. So um, in my mind, I gotta give him the benefit of the doubt on that one. Um, take advantage of it if he's willing to move ahead with that.
Okay, no further questions?
And, and again, I just, I wanna be clear, like this is, this is very preliminary. We don't have the detailed job description. I'm just, I'm looking for uh, support and principle to move ahead to the next step, um, and just kind of move this ahead. I mean, uh, of course, as, as meetings go on, I'm not looking for confirmation today, of course, but um, if there's anything that jumps out at anybody and any big red flags, um, I'd like to have that identified now if possible, so we can either um, address them or uh work to mitigate it. Uh, so the next one, uh, forty thousand dollars I've put in there. Again, the forty thousand dollars for the public works feasibility study is done through taxation, so I brought this to create awareness that as identified in the SDR of, of, that DIZART had done, we have outgrown the roads garage. So we are now leasing a, a mobile trailer to serve as the lunchroom now, because we just don't have room in the main building for all our staff now. So uh, the forty thousand dollars basically is going to uh identify the needs moving forward, basically the, the, the size of the facility. Um, you know, the meeting room, the kitchenette, just the whole, what do we need? This is how big we are. This is the growth we anticipate. It's a very preliminary study. Um, but again, it's something that I wanna put out there for discussion with council because it doesn't have to be done immediately, but it needs to be done and we gotta start looking at a new facility for our roads garage.
Maybe, Barbara, can I speak to that?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks. So, um, you know, Rob's putting it out there. This is a need at some point. Uh, if you can remind us how old that building is and uh just physically we're outgrowing it, we keep, you know, we've patched up the roof and we've put on garage doors and we've done these things. I've joked for three years with Rob, oh, we gotta get you a sand dome, and he says, okay, um, so, which we don't have. Um, so this is something that doesn't necessarily have to be done in twenty twenty-two, doesn't have to be fully funded in twenty twenty-two. So just to put it on the table, this is approximately what they cost. We could, as an example, and maybe just, you know, and again, we don't need to debate it today, but we could put in twenty this year. Um, that does leave a future council with having to commit an extra twenty thousand and doing it in a future year. It needs to get done. So it's just a matter if we're looking for cost savings in this year, it is on the taxation, but if you don't do a feasibility study to know what you need and not need today, what you're gonna need in, you know, you're gonna build a building. You're not gonna build it for, you know, maybe ten years out or eight, maybe not that long, five years out. But what do you need for the next far into the future? So it is something that we don't have to put the whole forty in this year. We don't have to actually do it this year. That's an approximate placeholder for what that costs. So if we're looking for cost savings, we can put in twenty this year. It does leave a future council to a little bit trapped because they've got twenty thousand for a feasibility study that costs forty, so just putting it out there.
I, I'd support that. I think, yeah, twenty thousand this year and then twenty twenty-three would be, I think, a, a good way to approach it if you're okay with that, Rob.
Okay.
Smith had a question.
Counselor Smith.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, so, uh, Rob, is, is this something that would be performed by a, like an outside consultant?
Yes, it would be done by consulting engineers.
And, and so, uh, coming off of uh, of the mayor's comments, uh, um, you know, this, this might be something that, uh, you know, would be, uh, part of that uh strategic plan review that we're gonna be doing, uh, later in the first quarter. Um, and uh, so I'm not sure that we would be hamstringing a future council by only funding part of this in uh, in twenty twenty-two. Um, you know, and, and uh, we'll talk later about reserves, but they're also going to be, uh, you know, I'll call them some injections into our reserve uh as a result of uh, of property sales and so forth. So there's, there's, you know, other opportunities there, so. Uh, no, this is, is similar to some other things we've talked about this morning, that there are gonna be some choices where we lock down on this budget, how things get funded. And um, and so although this needs to be done, let's, let's kind of keep it in the bigger picture and, and consider that uh long-term strategic plan and uh, you know, a variety of other things before we uh, I think we have to lock down on it. Uh, so, simple as that, thanks.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Uh, yeah, I'm just, uh, uh, thought, food for thought following up on that. Is this a possible candidate for modernization funding? Um, I don't know what the, what the guidelines are for that, but maybe there's a portion we could take out of that and then uh, the, you know, twenty twenty, um, half out of some kind of a government grant and half out of taxing. The other two, if I might, um, the brushing one forty-two, that's part of our seven-year plan that we more or less settled on. Okay, thank you. And then the other one was the uh Redstone Brook uh rehab or engineering of a hundred thousand. Is that a candidate? Uh, again, barred for the uh additional funds that were announced on Wednesday, uh, to take a look at, uh, where we could get that work done and uh through the um, uh, Community Infrastructure Fund. I don't know the guidelines, but it's something maybe to look at. But that uh may take that right out of the taxation, move it over there. That's, that's basically a one percent decrease right there, if that could, could be accomplished. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Smith?
Sorry, I didn't know if we're allowed to go back or if we're gonna handle this with questions again, but uh, the deputy mayor mentioned brushing. Well, Rob, uh, you do, you said twenty-five to thirty kilometers for about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh. Um, is that uh, uh, both sides of the road?
Yes.
Okay, and um, you know, we had a number of discussions about uh brushing, uh, you know, this past uh summer, there were uh uh, quite a number of concerns expressed in various parts of the community about the desperate need for brushing and the safety risk for uh pedestrians and cyclists in particular, but frankly motorists too. Um, and uh, so is it your perspective that this funding would be sufficient to uh kind of step up the pace and uh, and address areas where there are uh, you know, legitimate safety concerns?
I think it's a start, quite honestly. Um, if counselors recall, we got a pretty good deal on brushing last year uh, through an error in the bidding process. I don't expect that to happen this year. Um, and if you, if you work it backwards, the seven-year program, if we're doing thirty clicks a year, doesn't add up to two hundred and seventy-five, which is basically what we need. Um, but some of the roads around town, you know, we're not gonna run mechanical brusher through, so I got, I got a bit of leeway there. We're not gonna put a mechanical brusher on every road we have, because that's just not feasible. Um, but to your comment about the, the uh, the comments we had from the public is, I heard it from both sides, um, quite honestly this year, is why are you brushing my road? It didn't need it. It looks horrendous. Um, they said the brushing itself was uh, was a safety hazard um for wildlife, quite honestly, um, coming out of the bush. Um, and I've also had complaints of my road hasn't been brushed in four years. When are you gonna do it again? I mean, it's a, so it is a very passionate topic. Um, I think from a maintenance perspective, we're doing what we need to do. And I, as you say, we uh, maybe we have to put some better information on our website to, to deal with this. Um, I think that was discussed in the fall that we're gonna put something together just to get them more informed as to why we're doing it and that it is gonna grow up again. So, yeah, it, it looks like a tornado, tornado went through after the, the brusher leaves. But give it two months, um, make it was back and it looks fantastic in my opinion.
Well, um, yeah, I, I completely agree that there are passionate views on both sides of the uh, of the equation and uh, um, you know, some have never forgiven me for supporting brushing of their road. Uh, but um, uh, I'm particularly concerned about uh, you know, what I'll call some of the uh busier roads that are also higher speed roads and I use, you know, West Shore as an example, because we've talked about it a number of times, it certainly had a lot of complaints about it. Uh, you know, traffic's going at a pretty good clip there, because it's, you know, it's a legitimate eighty kilometer an hour road and uh, but there's a lot of hills and, and curves and there's a lot of brush that's hanging over that road during the uh, during the summer. And uh, but some of the other roads, I'll say some of the, you know, the roads that run off West Shore. Uh, you know, I'll use Boomerang as an example, we can say the same thing about Eastview, uh, Silk Pond. Uh, you know, whether we get that brush or not becomes less important. So my, my concern is that we have enough to address the, the busier roads. I'll put West Road in that same category as another one that's a busy road and uh uh portions of it are probably uh, you know, in need. Um. So I just wanna make sure you've got enough there to address, uh, to have confidence that you're gonna be able to address all of those, that there's any kind of safety risk on.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I think last year was, was a bonus for us. Say, we, we got that really good pricing, so we got a lot more done than we thought we would. Uh, I think we, we finished it with about fifty kilometers. Um, you know, so we'll go back to about twenty-five or thirty. Um, once I get the list, I'll know better kind of where we stand. West Shore is kind of an, an anomaly, because I've been here going on eleven years and we've brushed it three times. So to me, the seven-year plan's not gonna work on a West Shore. Um, you know, we have to get there every three to four years. The consequence of that is, it's been my experience that when you brush outer roads such as West Shore in particular, it speeds up traffic. So we may have just made the speeding issue more pronounced by clearing it out, giving them a wider field of view. Um, it maybe doesn't feel like their goal, not fast, but they certainly are.
Well, if you're concerned about speeding, lack of brushing isn't solve the problem, creating a safety ocker. Wanna feed issue, at least put a sign up on West Shore and say the speed limit is X as opposed to eighty, right? We don't have that right now.
No, I'm sure we're far from done talking about speeding.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right.
Uh, I think we got one more, I got one more slide, Barbara.
Yes.
So we discussed the new items. Uh, so what's been excluded here? So the transportation master plan funding, so this is identified in the county SDR. The problem with this is we don't have a defined scope. We don't know the funding formula. And we don't know who's gonna participate, quite honestly. Um, but there was talk of an RFP being issued in twenty twenty-two. Um, so Madam Mayor and, and Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you, I don't know what's been talked about. Uh, I did miss the last steering committee meeting at the county. So I'm just not sure if this master plan funding is gaining any traction at the county level. Um, should we have, just be cognizant that it could be coming down the pipe, or does council wish to set something aside for this?
I, I don't recall that it came to the surface at all. And Tamara, maybe, oh, Pat, you can go ahead, just go clear, sorry Deputy Mayor Kennedy, Tamara. I don't recall, I don't think you're putting in any fund for this.
It wasn't prioritized. I think there's a, there's a shortage of the senior management at, at the lower tiers that can help contribute to this, so. I think right now it's, it's on the, it's on the radar, but there's, really, I haven't seen any forward motion on it, uh, that I can think of right offhand other than the initial.
Okay, so we, we can stay tuned on that one. Um, so the next one on my list is the industrial park phase three. So I've not concluded anything on that project in particular either. The retracement survey is being completed as we speak, so what we did commit to doing this year was identifying the right of way going up there. And the next steps we've mentioned, perhaps clearing it out and grubbing it one year and punching a road in the year after. I just, I don't know if council is still interested in that, given that we are implementing the new asset management plan. We are kind of earmarking a lot of money to reserves, so this would be over and above um, anything you've seen today.
I, I guess I'll start it off and then we'll go to screen, because it's hard to know who's chairing, sort of, also I'll just kick it off. Um, it doesn't mean that we couldn't do it. Uh, even um, Counselor Smith identified the fact that we do have, should have some monies coming into reserves so that while we don't put it on the levy, doesn't mean we can't talk about it. I think it's a priority. You know, as we go into our fourth year, we, I, I certainly have some goals to make sure that certain things are, are going forward, so um, doing the survey work is important. I know people that have walked up through there and said like, how would you ever build a road up through there? It's so rocky, it's so hilly. I mean, we the way the lots are on paper are not the way maybe the lots are gonna be able to be constructed, except that it is still really valuable land. It's still, I think, a desire. So I would say that we don't need to add it to the levy. But that, it doesn't mean that we can't talk about it and uh, and, and have it at a different discussion and pull it out of a development reserve.
Counselor Clark?
Um, yeah, I, I, I agree. I think the um, I think it's important, as Rob has initiated, that we get, at least get a bit of a, a lay of the land, but I think in terms of actually doing the work on, I think it's something that comes under the um, the strategic um, uh, planning, we're planning and, or the strategic planning piece. Um, because it kind of rolls in with a longer term vision for the, for the community, so it would fit in there. Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thanks. I, I think same point or just now reemphasize what the mayor has said. You know, we've sold some property industrial park, that'll be coming in to uh receiving, if you'll, being received, if you like, in twenty twenty-two. And instead of adding something like this to the levy, let's utilize the uh, the funds we're securing from the uh, from the sale of the property, the same way as we get this uh, you know, survey work done, it'll open up additional properties potentially for sale. And um, you know, again, the general property taxpayer shouldn't be subsidizing each thing. We should be doing it because it's a legitimately a, a good investment, because we're gonna be able to sell off additional property. Um, let's get those funds in, put them in the reserve and use them to fund the survey work at that later in the year. Thank you.
Counselor Donaldson?
Hi, I would just like to add another five thousand dollars to my parquet on Elephant Lake Road. Um, I'm hoping that um, those trees will get down shortly and um, eh, eh, we may not need all of it, but it would be nice to put it in, so then I have ten thousand dollars, five thousand from twenty twenty-one and five thousand from twenty twenty-two, so it should be completely done then for next year.
So Rob, um, I believe that the twenty twenty-one budget did include five thousand and we were going to pull that, find a spot out of the, uh, budget for that. Um, so is this a contender to carry over from twenty twenty-one into twenty twenty-two and then add the extra five? That, that would be a recommendation? Okay, I've noted that. Counselor Smith?
Oh, there'd be some scope for that. I understand, you know, we had the discussion, uh, I can't remember exactly when, but say roughly a year ago about the, this concept and there were some diagrams and and planned presented at council and, uh, and Jeff was the, the one that provided some input at the time. There was county out there doing some work and, uh, he was going to be able to do some work. Uh, just before we stick in another five thousand. Um, I'd like to see a better definition of the scope of work and what the end result is that uh, we're hoping to achieve and, and how a difference from what was committed to, again, a better part of a year ago.
Counselor Donaldson?
Um, I, I believe all those numbers were, when we were discussing it a year ago, I think all those numbers were given to Jeff. Um, so I can just look up what was done and, uh, and do I give it to Rob? For the next meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, excuse me, but I think these things are generally come forward as a staff proposal or staff recommendation as opposed to, uh, you know, a counselor bringing forward, you know, their own assessment of the scope and how much money is going to be required. So I, I'm just looking for that. Um, you know, fact-based recommendation, if you like.
So the request has been noted and we'll have staff review that and bring back any additional information for the scope. Tamara?
I was just going to note that I think a lot of the information that Counselor Donaldson has, she did acquire from staffs.
Okay.
Barbara, I'll just speak to, yeah, so, but I hear what Counselor Smith is saying is that, okay, came by through notice of motion, came all the right way. So then we were, you know, told it was this much. Counselor Donaldson's now requesting an additional five thousand on her own. So Counselor Smith's saying, well, if, if the project was only five, now why is it now ten? That's where we need some, you know?
It, it was never five. It was put forward to last year when it was requested. It was to put a starting amount in there to start the project.
We, we will have our memories refreshed then as to what, what was involved there. We did support it. So Barbara, I have another question on roads or transportation.
All right, go ahead.
Regarding sidewalks. So, um, Rob, you weren't able to be here, uh, the day that we did the, had the delegation from the CIA Communities in Action on the walk audit. And I just wanted to reiterate, you've got in here, well, the carryover for Highland and York Street. That's coming up from the town dock and up that piece that we're going to do, right? Yep. Uh, but then you've got Garden Retirement Extension. So that is taking the sidewalk around on the north side on, where sunny side, that rock outcrop. Be- because while we had the delegation, I personally wasn't able to answer very many details. I know we had survey work done. Uh, so I just want to, if, if you want to speak to that at all.
I, yeah, there's really not a whole lot to report on. It's the, the survey work was done from Park Street to Garden Retirement. So the extension will be from Park Street past, uh, you know, up to the corner, past the rock cut to Garden Retirement. Um, it did not take into account any more sidewalk between Park and say the bridge or York Street. Um, it was, it was very, a very defined small section that we committed to doing too as part of the development.
Okay, so just because we did the walk audit and they made recommendations, because one of the recommendations was a pedestrian crossover and all of that, that is all, this is only for sidewalk from Gardens to Park?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yes, a- and actually, uh, when we were on site with the ministry, uh, the issue of pedestrian crossover came up for right at Garden Retirement, quite honestly, to get them across the road to the existing sidewalk. And they would not be supportive of that just because of the alignment of the road.
Counselor Smith?
Thanks. Uh, we're going around different topics now. Uh, Rob, uh, one of the other points you made is you were going through your presentation material related to snow plowing and, uh, and sanding. And how for, uh, for both twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, um, you know, our, our actual spending was, uh, considerably below as a budget. In fact, in both cases, it was less than half of the budget. And, uh, you know, which, uh, suggests to me that, um, you spent, you made less trips spreading sand and plowing snow. Is that accurate? And, and so, uh, but you said you didn't want to kind of track these funds as real savings. You wanted to move them into reserves so that we'd have them to replace the vehicles. Um, you know, down the road. Again, is that a correct understanding?
Uh, not all of the savings. Uh, we got to see where we land at the year end. Because it's my understanding now, and Barbara, you may have to confirm this, but I think right now our rentals are actually drawing on the reserve right now, which means our trucks weren't rolling enough to put money into the reserve to pay for the replacement. So we, we want to see how much we're drawing from the reserve and then move over a certain portion of that to cover the replacement of vehicles.
Okay. So, um, you know, and, and again, I'm just looking through a little education here or insight, but um, I've driven my truck a lot less in the last couple of years because of COVID. And, um, uh, because I'm not putting as many kilometers on it as I might have expected, I figure I'll drive that truck longer than I otherwise would have. Otherwise, maybe I'll keep it for an extra year. And, um, you know, you replace your truck every eight years. It's been the pattern. Uh, if we're not using as much, um, you know, uh, shouldn't they last a little longer?
Uh, maybe. Uh, if we got a heavy year, maybe they, we take a year off their life. That, that's the flip side to it. As it stands now, yes, we're on a, a, about eight years. The problem is we have nine trucks. So, um, once every, once in a while, we're going to have to replace two of those trucks. Now, we're, we have a, a bit of leverage because two of them are single axles. I expect them to last a little longer. So I don't look at the asset management plan as saying I have to replace this truck in this year. That's what we're recommending. That's what we're putting, putting money aside for. But we do review these trucks as they come up to see if we can get another year out of them because if I don't have to get rid of a truck, trust me, I don't want to because I'm not saying the new ones are any better than the old ones. You know, um, some of the older technology seems to keep chugging along pretty good. But yeah, we, we just got our trucks onto this cycle before we were running anywhere from ten to thirteen years. So right now, our whole site, our whole fleet is on an eight-year cycle. So we can certainly reflect that and compare apples to apples, if you will. Um, it would also depend on what route that truck is on because some trucks certainly get more miles than others depending on what route they're on and quite honestly, the driver that's driving them. Because the more senior drivers, their trucks roll more often.
Okay, can you explain why that would be the case of? I understand the route thing, but the more senior drivers, their trucks roll more often. What does that mean?
Uh, we're unionized shop. So if we only need three trucks, we take the top three drivers and they roll the trucks every day. So.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Rob? I think you still have a couple of points on this slide, Rob.
Oh, yeah, and this is just for information. Um, so basically what I didn't include is the traffic count, speed and classification for Ward one, which was a, a carryover. It was deferred last year or excluded, quite honestly, as well as the traffic classifier. So we did take that money and we sunk them into four speed radar signs. I haven't lost sight that we still have to finish the traffic count and classification in Ward one. Um, but I just think we have a lot going on this year and I don't think it's certainly real high on my list of priorities this year to finish, so.
Okay. So I think that's it for you, Rob. So, um, that concludes the departmental presentations and, uh, I guess I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Roberts.
Okay, well, thank you. And, uh, that was fairly painless, actually. Today, I'm really pleased with all the conversation, how things went. We, I mean, there's still lots to debate. We'll really have that conversation at the next, uh, draft budget meeting, but, um, they, did, did you want to touch on any expenditure? I mean, it's really, uh, you, you won't know the, how our year end is going to come out anyway. And our thought process has always been if we have any savings in a year that we put those in reserves, we don't offset any savings in reserves to, uh, offset taxation in the next year. That, that's happened before, but that's not, that's not, um, the thought now. Is there anything else you want to add, Barb? And I did see Counselor Smith's hand up, but I'll just check with Barbara first.
Uh, no, I don't have anything to add at this time. Uh, I've got quite a few notes to take away for, uh, consideration for the next, uh, meeting.
So what I think I'd like to do then is, uh, because I was sort of timing that we'd be around till three o'clock. We don't need to, two thirty is great or even two fifteen. However, I, I think this would be a really good time to bring up some general questions, comments, things that maybe weren't captured today. I have one that I would like to bring up and then I'll open it to the floor and see if there's things from the floor that, that either you want to go back to today or things that weren't captured. Um, I've been working with, through the Glee Park Committee and the, um, at the ski club uh, group, as we know, in order for the student residence to be built where it's going to be built, Dyser committed to building a new ski club garage. So I've, we've been working on that. That is not reflected anywhere in this budget because of, uh, I'm going to propose that we take that out of a development reserve, as Counselor Smith noted. And we've said before, we did have some sale of property that went through this year. Um, so I'm very close to getting a price on, on something and a design to take back to the ski club that is hopefully a little more realistic to, to, uh, what, what we can come up with. So, but that's not reflected anywhere in the budget because it wouldn't be on the levy. So basically, we're talking about things on the levy. So anyway, I'll open up to the floor and see if there's questions or comments, general things that weren't captured today.
Counselor Smith?
Yep, uh, thank you. And, and that, uh, Mayor Roberts would be great to see, uh, not only with respect to that garage, but, uh, I, I'd like to suggest that for our next review, um, part of what we go through is, uh, you know, is, you can call it puts and takes. You can call it an opportunities list or whatever. Um, you know, there's a proposed budget here that has a tax increase of, uh, uh, over seven and a half percent. Uh, I personally consider it to be, uh, far too high. Um, we, we heard, uh, early this morning in the first part of the discussion that we had some good news from the province. Uh, just a day or two ago in terms of some additional, uh, capital grant funding. Uh, there are some other things that we've talked about today. Um, that, uh, you know, staff had acknowledged could be funded, uh, you know, from reserves, for example, as opposed to, uh, being loaded on taxation. Um, and, um, and so I'd like to be able to have a conversation about each of those items and, uh, and hopefully at our next meeting, Barbara could bring forward that I'll call it opportunity list. Um, so that we can have a, a legitimate discussion. There's, uh, you know, as she noted, we're finishing twenty twenty-one with, uh, uh, as I recall, three point eight million dollars in, uh, in the reserves and, um, there, the reality is we know there's some properties that have been sold this year, uh, that we expect to close next year. Uh, that, um, you know, could, uh, uh, help uh, address some of the needs that staff have identified today without, um, placing an unacceptably high burden on our taxes through taxation. Uh, but it's, it's not something that, you know, individually as counselors, we should be speculating on. There could be a, as I said, a, a list brought forward and we can talk, you know, uh, about, uh, those individual elements and, uh, and make some conscious decisions to help us manage this.
So, so at the very beginning of the meeting, we did talk about the, um, uh, additional funding that we are going to be receiving from the province for the, um, OCIF. So, you know, that will be a council decision and Barbara can maybe put a implication. If you put one, if you, if you don't put any of it into the twenty twenty-two budget, you're, and we make some other little tweaks, you're sitting at say seven point one percent. If you put it all in, you're sitting at five point one percent. If you put, you know, we sort of know it's a fairly round number that, uh, one percent is approximately a hundred thousand dollars. We got approximately two hundred thousand dollars more. So you know, could, do we use some of it to help offset a, a fairly high, we're not used to numbers like this of increase. Um, Dyser, you, you know, the last three years, we've been incredibly low. We've come in at sort of one point nines and maybe I think the three and so the other thing that Barbara usually does is, is a comparison based on the per hundred thousand. So while this might be Dyser it's here to have a seven percent increase and another municipality only has a two percent increase, we have to really look at each municipality has different services and provides different, um, has, has different responsibilities. And so, you know, I think the big question I always ask myself is are our taxes fair? And are we being responsible to making sure we're putting the right amount of money to, uh, for today and for the future? So, you know, we also look at that base of the, what are we paying a hundred thousand dollars per, um, of, of taxes per hundred thousand of, of assessed value. So that's always a, a good comparison to see where we're at and where we would end up at. And Barbara usually have that. And usually in our second draft, we'll have maybe a little more detail of the, um, not that, you know, matters about reserves, but a little like maybe a report on, on all of, where all of those are at. So I'll, I'll take the rest questions from here, Barbara, and then we'll, but there can be to you or whatever. I did see Counselor Clark and then Deputy Mayor Kennedy.
Yeah, um, yeah, so you, Madam Mayor, the, um, it, it's, it's become apparent that there's, there's other funding opportunities that are just hitting the table. So we really don't know what that, that end position's going to look like. And I think for another couple of weeks, you know, based on some of the opportunities that have been discussed. Um, the other thing though to keep in mind is Dyser has traditionally been one of the, um, I guess, least resourced townships in, in Halberton County, uh, you know, relative to the others and, and that. And I'm, I'm, what I'm looking at is a lot of stress has been put on, on township staff. We haven't got the staff to be proactive in terms of some of the, the planning stuff we need to do and, and some of the services we've got to deliver. And I, you know, and, and as a result of that, we may be looking at a, a few percent, a few percent higher increase than, than the other townships. Um, but anyways, we've got to, we've got to compare apples to apples. If we're, if, if we're doing growth the same as the other townships and we haven't got the staff, we're going to have to spend a few bucks and, 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 and be, um, be fair to our staff or we're going to be losing our people. We won't be delivering anything. So I think, I think we've got to be a little more proactive. Um, the other thing goes in terms of priorities and things going forward, we are, we have committed to do a strategic plan in the new year. And I think that's got to, and I think we've got to, um, give that as proper, as, as proper framework in fact, in terms of driving out, you know, our, our larger, um, uh, planning priority stuff. So I, I don't think we should be putting too much on the table at this point in time until we've got an idea in terms of where we want to go or where, where we think the community is going to go. And, uh, you know, get some proper, get some proper, uh, strategy and, and planning in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think the reality is, is we've already committed to the asset management plan of a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So that's one point seven that we're pretty firm on. And going forward, so if we could find literally like the two percent uh, with that two hundred thousand dollar carrot, it looks like it would be great if we could use it. That would bring us down to the mid-fives, which is in our actuality like a three percent increase if we take out that that, you know, the asset management plan money, uh, quite prepared to live with something like that. The second part, I, I want to address Counselor Smith's derogatory remarks towards myself and to Madam Mayor this morning and also to the county IT staff. So I reached out to the county IT, uh, following his remarks because I didn't have everything right at my fingertips. Uh, when he was talking about, um, lack of county, um, taking advantage of cloud assets. So the response that I got back, I won't go read partial of it because it's, it's quite extensive and I'll be glad to provide this to Counselor Smith and other members of council afterwards. The county IT team will assess cloud options where they exist when evaluating new solutions. We have implemented a policy and formalized cloud solution evaluation processes, knowing that cloud adoption is on the rise. In fact, county municipalities are already utilizing cloud-based systems for the following workflows. Help desk system, learning management system, security awareness and fish training, smartphone, remote desktop, uh, multi-factor authentication solutions, file sharing, ambulance call reporting, digital signature, web content, road patrolling solutions, recreation management solutions for Dyser, Minnan Hills and Algonquin Islands, building permitting system for Highlands East. building permitting system for Highlands East, on and on. There's another half dozen here. In regards to the specific issue of electric server drive space for the digitizing of DICE Art's building planning files, one of the considerations is that these files need to be integrated within CityView, which is currently an on-premises solution. And while in the future it may make sense to move the entire CityView infrastructure to the cloud, the truth is, we're not there yet. We're static files, we're high uptime, is is not critical to the business. On-premises storage makes sense. Hopefully, this provides some context. So the county is on this and uh, on this situation. And I applaud our county IT staff and I just wanted to make sure that not only his remarks from on the, on the record that the revival was as well. Thank you.
Wait, well, thank you for that update and reaching out over lunch. Um, we're not here to debate the county. Uh, the, so really, we, you know, that's, but it came out of planning and it came out of uh, councillor Smith's wanting to say that we should be cloud, putting things on the cloud. So, but we're not here at this table. We're talking about our budget right now. Um, although we do depend on IT. Councillor Smith, just very watch, I'm giving you a caution. We're not here to discuss the county. Okay?
I'm not here to discuss the county and I didn't insult anybody. I didn't make any derogatory remarks. I simply suggested that the mayor and deputy mayor, who had a chance to review the county and provide input to county council, that they encourage staff to make sure that we were considering every cloud option. And as simple as that. So to suggest my comments were derogatory is completely offside. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. So, so, yep, okay, border. Um, are there other items that we have not brought forward today? Uh, like I said, the next budget meeting, what I thought we do is we'll, you know, spend a whole section on uh, on the grants. Like, so we haven't talked about the lesions request for $10,000. We, and we don't need to talk about those today. What we will do is sort of do a little slightly deeper digging, deeper dive, as they say, at our next budget meeting. Um, in the meantime, if there aren't any further questions today, what has happened in the past is if we think about something after, feel free to contact Barbara. And then when Barbara replies, she will reply all because we're all interested in the, we, you know, what one councillor has knowledge of, we should all have knowledge of. Um, and if you, you know, if you want to ask that question between now and and our next budget meeting in January, that's, that's fine. Better to ask it then, earlier than um, than on that day, so that staff can be prepared as best prepared for the next budget meeting. Anything else we want to discuss today? That'd be awesome. We could get finished up. I'm, I need to, I need to lie down. Councillor, uh, Wood Roberts, pardon me.
Uh, I just wanted Mallory, if at all possible, to confirm our, our meeting dates, if that's possible at this time.
Yeah, I just, uh, just for budget, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, so uh, the January budget meeting is on Friday, uh, the 14th. And then uh, the February one would be on uh, the 11th. Second Friday in each month.
And I have a feeling we'll need to go right through the February because we have lots of things to discuss. At the January, we couldn't possibly be, I don't think we'll be ready till February. That said, if we're close, we could also in choose to not have that special meeting, but incorporate a budget discussion into a council meeting if if it isn't too heavy. I have been warned that our December council meeting in a week and a half is a very full day. I'll better pack a lunch that day, better than what I wasn't prepared today. So um, be prepared. Also, there's no committee of the whole in January. Because staff can't get ready over that time. So there's no committee hold, just the budget and the regular council meeting. So if there's nothing further for today, I will look for um, a resolution that receives the first draft of the municipal uh, of DICE Art budget. So look, mover, seconder. And that's councillor Clark and second by councillor Donaldson. Your result, the council acknowledges receipt of the first draft of the municipality of DICE Art at all 2022 budget. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. We need to confirm proceedings of today, mover, seconder. Councillor McKechnie, councillor Smith. He resolved the bylaw number 2021-89 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the special council meeting held on December 10th, 2021. We read a first, second and third time, passed, signed and the corporate seal attached there to, here to. All in favor? Okay, carried. And lastly, an adjournment. Move in a second or two, adjourn. Councillor Donaldson and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. Before I read that, I just want to thank Barbara once again. I know you went down into the lockdown, good budget lockdown, but I really appreciate the way our budget is presented. It's clear, it's easy to follow for me, so I'm hoping it's easy to follow for the public. And I think that there'll be a little bit more conversation um, and questioning. I think, you know, the goal obviously of councillors, when we see uh, the highest increase that we've had, certainly in this term, is to look for some cost savings if possible. But we always have to keep in mind, the theme of the budget is asset management plan. So it might not be quite as possible to bring it to, to numbers that we've had a percentage increases in the past. Okay, uh, so I did have moved by councillor Donaldson, second by uh, deputy mayor Kennedy. Bureau result the council adjourned its special meeting held on December 10th, 2021 at 2:12 PM. All in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you, everyone, and have a great weekend. Take care.